Okay. Welcome. We are going to open this regular Board of Education meeting for January 26, 2023. And we are coming back from closed session to first do our roll call vote. And so Vice President Wong.
Present.
Clerk Coffee.
Present.
Trustee Venegas.
Present.
And Trustee Pizzotti.
Present.
Thank you.
After the Pledge of Allegiance, can I request that we take a moment of silence for the shootings during the Lunar New Year celebration and half moon bay that happened in front of children?
Absolutely. So we are going to stay standing after the Pledge of Allegiance for a moment of silence. And can I ask Billy Duba to lead us in the pledge? Please, Billy, would you lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, dear God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you for that. Announcements of actions to be taken in closed session. We have Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. Information received. Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators, WSTA, CSEA, and Management. Information received. And that takes us to approval of the agenda. At this time, are there any changes to be made to the agenda?
I'd like to make change, or motion to change a few items on the agenda.
Okay, you don't have to make a motion. We can just move them up.
All right, great. One of the agenda items that I'd like to move up is discussion of the District Office location relocation. Wanted to make it first. I see that we have really heavy agenda items, a lot going on with testing, and I don't want it to get lost in the grand scheme of things. And I think there's a lot of people here that are here for that. So I'd like to move that up.
Okay. We have two others that we're moving up because of guests who are here. So let's get through that and then we'll see where the right place is to move that item up as we go through. Okay. Are there any others that you wanted to change?
I also wanted to discuss the Agenda Item 3C and 3D, if we can make that consent.
Okay, 3C and 3D.
I believe those are in regards to the electrical charging stations.
Sure. 3C, so 3C and 3D will be at the top of consent, right before consent. We'll vote for those.
Did you want to move them to action or did you want to?
Or to action, sorry, we'll move those to action. Thank you. So we will. Moving to action.
Yeah.
Yeah. I will move it to the end behind. Thank you. So we will move 3C and 3D to the end of action. Off consent. Okay. Let me just make sure I have notes going. Okay. And then I have the removal of E4G. And that is approval of out-of-state conference for youth outreach staff. That one is going to be removed from this agenda at this time and will come back to us. So removed, not on action, but removed. And then we're also going to move, because we have guests, action. It was requested that we do Action P2 and 3. Those go with our bond. So Action 2 and 3, we are putting before the information discussion items. So that leaves us with, there are a lot of changes. So removing E4G, moving P2, P3 to the top of information discussion, 3C, 3D to the end for action, and then the discussion on, that takes us to address the district facility concerns, which is, we've removed two of those, so it now becomes Action Item 2. And so we can put that, to move that earlier to respect our audience that's here. I know we have a lot of people here too, who are all here for the California Dashboard and Accountability Plan as well. Do we want to move all three of those? So we have P2, P3, and then P4, which is District Office, to the start of the agenda.
So you're saying take action first, just move the whole entire action?
No, because we still have Action Item Number 1 for our school accountability report cards that stays there. And now we have moved two more action items, 3C and 3D. I think this is our most complicated agenda we have.
The motion hasn't been made, so I think we need to clarify the motion. Are we moving P4 to the beginning of?
P2, P3, P4.
But then are we switching P4 first? I'm just wanting to clarify.
I wasn't going to, because we had already a request to move the other two up. So I was going to have P2, P3, P4.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying from clerk.
In between M and N, right? In between M and N.
Yeah, she said top, so I didn't know if she wanted it before the very, very first.
I said I wanted it one of the first, but since we have guests, I want to make sure the guests are able to speak.
Do we want to do P4, P2, P3?
That was my clarifying question. Clerk Coffee, did you want it to be P4 first, P2, and then P3? Or did you want to be P2, P3, P4?
I would like it to be P4 first and then 2 and 3, but I would also want to respect our special guests.
Okay, well, we can keep it at that. So can you all follow in the audience we are doing? As long as I have approval of this agenda, P4, P2, and P3 will be going above information and discussion items. And then action will be, from consent, 3C and 3D will be moved to the back at the end with action. And we have removed E4G.
And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Yeah. I second.
Thank you. So a motion made by Trustee Pizzotti, seconded by Vice President Wong. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Aye to, vote aye. Okay. We do not have any celebrations or communications this evening, so that takes us right to our association reports. And we have WSTA. President.
I've been directed to stand away from the microphone a little bit. Little booming voice here. You guys took me off guard. Usually there's like at least a good 30 minutes before we do this. Good evening, trustees. Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, Vice President Wong, Clerk Coffee, and the rest of you. It's good to see you all. Really trying to talk quietly so I don't bust the microphone. Actually, this works with my class too. The first thing I wanted to do tonight was introduce a colleague. We all are familiar with the critical work that our SPED department does. And we are also, we recognize the increasing challenges that face SPED departments across the state and the country as impacts become greater and resources become fewer. So with that being said, I'm going to cede a few minutes to my colleague, Deanna Crispin Trujillo, to speak on SPED, and then I'll join you again at the podium.
Hello. My name is Deanna Trujillo Crispin. I'm an education specialist at Bridgeway Island School. I've worked for Washington Unified for nine years. Prior to that, I was in a school district in South Sutter County for seven years. I'm also a second-generation WUSD employee. My mother's a retired school bus driver. This is my first year as an education specialist in this district. I decided that I was ready for a change. In my heart, I've always known special ed is where I need to be. This year, with two kids in college and one in middle school, the time was right to pursue a second credential. I come to you tonight about several topics. The first is staffing at Bridgeway Island. Our school houses 1,100 kids approximately. Our room serves over 60 students between K and 8th grade. I've learned that case managers like myself are expected to run a caseload of up to 28. I currently have 27. My partner in 68 has 27. We're lucky enough to have a third partner. However, he is part-time, and that's the rub. Our partner is only on-site every Thursday and Friday and every other Wednesday. This means either his caseload is ignored on the days that he is not at work, or we try our best to pick up his slack. This is why I mentioned how many students we already have. Two to three days a week, we struggle to make minutes because of staffing. We have to make the tough decision of who will not be getting services that day based on the needs of all 60 kids and two teachers. When a student has a severe need and requires one-to-one support, that can take hours away from our own caseloads. Groups are missed, push and support does not happen. I've been asking for help with this issue for months. At one point, one para quit, and we were down to one para and two and a half teachers to serve as 60 students. We've been lucky enough to get a second para. We are hearing a third para is in the works. However, even with three paras, we still struggle to meet minutes Monday through Wednesday on a regular basis. For now, Dr. Befico has worked magic to get a sub two days a week, so we have a third teacher in the room. Our site and our kids deserve to have the proper amount of staffing five days a week in order to meet all minutes. Saying our K2 teacher is within his caseload does not answer the question of can we cover all minutes. An easy solution to this problem would be to find the funding to have a whole teacher, instead of a half, five days a week at Bridgeway Island. Topic 2 is space at Bridgeway. Those 60-plus teacher, students, 2.5 teachers, and possibly three paras all share one room. We are scrambling for space. We are on top of each other, and there is nowhere to go. At 1:30, our room, Room 23, becomes a middle school classroom offering the elective of study skills. Our middle schoolers use the room, which is their right, and work on a variety of items. This means no groups can meet or take place in the room at that time. There are no open tables. The volume in the room can be loud, as these are kids doing what middle schoolers do. This means for the last hour of the day, we are left scrambling to find a place to teach the neediest of our students in less-than-ideal spaces. We cram ourselves around our admin's desk. We try not to be too loud in the library when students are in there checking out books and working as TAs. We sit at open picnic tables, trying to talk louder than our amazing band students can play. We beg classrooms from Kinder, and we ask teachers on prep if we can use their room. While I know we can't grow space, we should be considering dropping a portable across from our current room. There's a large patch of dirt that could house it. We have lovely grassy areas between wings. While it isn't pretty, why can't we move a portable into the middle? I know it's not ideal, but we have to try to find some solutions to the spaces at Bridgeway Island. My third topic tonight is not site-specific. I ask you, board members, to talk to your SPED teachers about how many hours they work after work. Gen ed teachers must stay and provide conferences twice a year for all students. If a teacher works two hours after the 110 dismissal, that is about 16 hours for eight days of conferences. They are also responsible for 12 hours of adjunct duty. You can consider our conferences and adjunct duty going on year-round. If each of us has 28 students, the caseload max, and each IEP runs an hour and a half to two hours, we're putting in about 42 hours after school every school year. This does not include initial IEPs. If your child needs to be assessed, those involve several hours. In fact, just this month, we've received four additional requests for new assessments. So you'd need to add an additional eight hours to that 42, number of 42 that I just gave you for myself. Let's see. Why is this acceptable? Saying your job after school, that's just part of your job, isn't the answer. The answer is to pay us for any hours above adjunct duty and conferences that our general ed peers provide. Or the answer is to ask your sites to offer daytime IEPs once or twice a month, depending on the size of the school. Honor our professionalism by treating us as professionals, not telling us that over a week's worth of work outside of contract hours is part of the job. You wouldn't say that to a doctor or a lawyer. I know this is a lot, and it's taken me a long time to come here to speak, but I'm at my breaking point. I would love to invite any of you to come by Bridgeway Island any day. I'll share my schedule. I'll share all three of our schedules. I would love to show you our room, the materials we use, and how we haul it all over campus. Looking for open space, I'd love for you to meet the kids we serve and to see the growth that they've had in reading and in math. I'd love for you to see why I took this job. And I'd love for you to see that you have the power to create real equity by taking care of things at Bridgeway Island and across the district. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Deanna, for your work on behalf of students and for your passion. I would just like to say, to follow up with that, that my class is one of those classes that has a student that was not able to receive their minutes on several occasions this year. And I'd just like to ask the Cabinet and the trustees to consider, what if that was your child? What if that was your child that was not receiving the minutes that they are entitled to, to get a fair education? Moving on from this item, I'd like to talk a little bit about Acts of God and the crazy weather that we had starting at the end of December and the beginning of January. As we know, we were not spared in WUSD from the damage caused by these nine atmospheric rivers that came into central California. And I think that they, you know, we certainly didn't get it as bad as some other folks in other places. And my heart goes out to communities like Wilton, and I'm praying for the folks in Wilton that they have a speedy recovery. But I do want to say that we got a little taste of that, and we have an opportunity to look at how we respond and make sure that we are better prepared in the future in case we do have a greater impact. And what I'm talking about specifically, and I know that the board is probably familiar, we had some damage at Riverbank, Elkhorn, and Westmore Oaks, with the greatest damage being at Westmore Oaks. I kind of wanted to share with you the experiences of some of the teachers at Westmore Oaks. When we returned for our PL training on January 10, staff at Westmore Oaks were given the opportunity, or they were told that their classrooms, some of their classrooms needed to be moved. And basically, they were given the choice, you know, they were given the opportunity to attend the PL or move their classroom. But most of them, who I talked to, were under the impression that if they did not move their classroom, that it was likely not to be ready for the next day when school began. And I understand, we are not accustomed to being, you know, barraged by torrents of weather. However, there's a couple of problems with this. First, there's actually language in the contract that allows for two days, and obviously with short notice, you know, two days to prepare isn't there, but two days of preparation or compensation to move a classroom due to construction or if the room is not usable. So that needed to be taken into account. But the other concern, and listen, it's been told to me, obviously, the Westmore Oaks, new Westmore Oaks campus is recently renovated. So, you know, we probably don't have problems with extremely toxic things like asbestos and those sorts of things. However, I will remind everybody that building, general construction supplies are not necessarily great for your health. You know, you probably shouldn't be handling materials that went through drywall and those sorts of things. And our teachers were, being asked to do this, were in their rooms cleaning off materials that were soiled in brown, sludgy water, one of which told me that, and I don't know if there's any relation here, but that later on in the day, they broke out in hives. They were not offered PPE, and so obviously, this is a concern, and we need to make sure our teachers aren't asked to do this sort of thing in the future. And then the compensation piece is something that I've already worked with the Cabinet on, and it looks like we're moving towards that. But I just want to make sure that we're more prepared next time, and we're not asking teachers to take that on and miss a PL, which, again, I want to congratulate Ed Services for another PL that was generally really well-received. And those teachers didn't have the opportunity to attend that. I wanted to talk a little bit about checking boxes. Because I think that that is the pitfall that districts often fall into when we look at what we have in front of us, when we look at the task we have to educate children and what's being mandated by federal and state governments. I think we have to guard against that. Like, how are we going to meet this instead of how are we going to serve the kids in this? And the reason I'm bringing this up is several of my staff at my site this last week were notified that we were going to have award ceremonies next week, next Wednesday. It's a little over a week of notice on that. Furthermore, the teachers were notified that these awards were going to be almost entirely based on the results of the I-Ready results. Now, I-Ready, although it has some strengths, and the jury's still out for me, but there's certainly some great things about it. It is a standardized form of assessment. And I'd like to ask the board, I don't even think I have to answer this question, but I will. What part of the population tends to underperform on standardized assessments? We know the answer to that question. All of my colleagues sat through an amazing PL on January 10, where we talked about equity, and we talked about serving students. The great news is that my colleagues have already bought into this. We bought in for a really long time. And the presenter was absolutely amazing. Some of, I got to tell you, I don't know if you were there, but he presented equity. It was the perfect thing. He talked about when you're at a major event, and you look at the women's bathroom and the men's bathroom, and the women's bathroom is out the door, and the men are just like strolling in and out, right? And it was like the best example of equity I've ever seen, because it's not like the bathrooms aren't the same. Like, they have the similar facilities. It's just one functions better for quick use, and another gender needs more, probably more facilities, right? And so I thought this was really great. But as we're sitting through this presentation, and he's talking about it, one of the responses I got from my colleagues is, man, he was great, and we get it. We're doing everything we can to serve our students equitably, but some of the problem that we have is that the structures that we're working in are not equitable. And I would submit that, this is where I'm talking about checking boxes. In our effort to meet the goals of our strategic plan, and I know part of that is acknowledging students, we can't just check a box saying I have an award symbol. The fact that my staff did not know about the award symbol until a week beforehand, the fact that they weren't part of it, planning it, the fact that my PBIS team knew nothing about it and was not part of planning it, and we've been working on equity for three years, is extremely concerning to me. Extremely concerning. I was told that, you know, because one of the things we had talked about is, in the past, is having an award ceremony that honored the whole child, right? And so some of our kids struggle on standardized assessments. Some of our kids have real difficulties with computers. Some of our kids worked really hard to write the letter T or to memorize one of their, you know, one of their mathematical tables, and that might not show up in a standardized assessment. But teachers have judgment, and they can acknowledge that growth. A standardized assessment cannot acknowledge that growth. So if we're truly striving for equity, we can't fall into this. And I got to tell you, parents have already been notified, this thing is happening. You can't put the genie back in the bottle. But teachers are disheartened. I'm afraid of standing up there when one student might not receive an award and 19 others do in their class. Now, I've been assured that we can make exceptions. We'll find ways to make sure that those kids get awards. But that in itself, right there, says that we're not ready for this. If we're trying to scramble to figure out what a kid can get an award for, when I can tell you, out of my 21 students, I know what every single one of them is amazing at. I know what they're really good at. And so let the practitioners be a part of this. I'm not saying we shouldn't have acknowledgements or awards, but we should make sure that we're doing it in an equitable and conscientious way. So I'd like you to consider that. The last thing I want to talk to you about is just a little thing, and that's that we're trying to raise money for the High School Scholarship Fund, and we're doing a thing at every school office. We're, starting on Monday, we're going to have a big black bag where you can bring sneakers. Used sneakers, and you put them in the big black bag, and we turn those in, and they translate to money for our graduating seniors. And we're really trying to build up our scholarships. So please, trustees, if you have any old sneakers in your closet, bring them to one of the sites. We would really like to give four scholarships this year at full rate, and we're moving up to that. So that being said, I wish you a good evening, a great weekend, and it's nice to see you after a long break.
Thank you. We now have the CSEA report, and President Gendara.
Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, Board and Cabinet. First thing I'd like to discuss is the lack of communication within our district with CSEA regarding important health and safety issues like COVID-19 guidelines. We continue to get COVID exposure emails, but we are unclear on what the guidelines are. Are we using and what employees are actually required to do? Who is actually the authority, and where are the policies? Why does CSEA have to request meetings to discuss health and safety changes in policies? Why does the district not reach out and be proactive when it comes to our employees' health and safety? It seems as though they only care when the initiative or bringing the concerns to all of you. For example, when we receive an exposure email, we are given guidelines, and they are highlighted. But these guidelines are different from Cal OSHA guidelines. Why aren't the Cal OSHA guidelines attached, other than there's exclusion for symptomatic employees? After a form, this can all change and be easily resolved by a simple meeting with HR. After our formal request for a meeting on multiple topics, it takes 20 days to 30 to 30 days to get meetings, and I understand, we all have schedules, we're all, you know, I was gone for a week for a conference, I know, I know, the super assistant of HR, he was in a conference, but I think we could come together and we can, we can do this a lot faster, especially on issues regarding health and safety. And then the last thing I'd like to discuss before I move, before my VP Ruth speaks is, the district needs to come up with a better solution and route to investigate administrators. For instance, when a classified employee is given any sort of discipline, from a verbal warning to a letter of concern or reprimands, the district should take the proper steps to probably call in a classified staff member who is receiving this form of discipline and get their version of what's going on. We may find out that the administrator may be the one who is violating a safe protocol and placed our classified member in an unsafe working condition. Maybe that administrator is the one at fault and should be reprimanded, or maybe that administrator may have a history of, we'll just say, for a lack of better words, not telling the truth. So I think our district can do better at seeing what the issues, what the true issues are at hand. Too many times administrators are handing out these forms of discipline to only hide what they are doing wrong, and that needs to change.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, President Gondara. Good evening. On behalf of our classified members, I would like to thank you all, in particular, our Ed Services Department, for the amazing training opportunity that was offered to all of us. A true district ride collaboration and effort is something to celebrate. Sarah and Connie and the other classified members who worked into the night to ensure the day was professional and ran smoothly should be celebrated as well. In addition to the valuable sessions, there was also an incredible act of bravery shown. One of our classified members, who I believe is a campus aide, saved the life of a certificated staff member by successfully performing the Heimlich maneuver during the lunch break. Our member deserves recognition. I'll say that again. Our member deserves recognition. And this incident should be a signal to the district to start again providing free training and continuing education updates on such life-saving measures each and every year. I believe the last training hosted at the district office was 2019, because I took. Our classified members are absolutely unsung heroes, and this is just one example of the incredible service they hope to never have to provide, but when called upon, they have shown a great amount of courage and strength and came through. Right now, it feels as though we are attempting to be back to normal, but clearly, things are not normal, and unfortunately, may not be for the foreseeable future or ever again. The most fundamental needs of students, both academic and emotional, behaviorally and socially, have increased. We need everyone to understand that those classified members who are providing direct support, both in and out of the classroom, cannot have additional duties and responsibilities continually stacked on them without additional support for themselves. When needs increase for students, there is a direct increase in responsibility to those who are providing the needs. Our contractual reclassification process is currently happening, and HR has been meeting with our members to determine who is eligible for reclass and who is not. We want everyone to understand that this period is extremely important to us, and we are paying very close attention. The duties that our members are being directed to do that are outside the scope of their job descriptions will not continue if they are not reclassed and fairly compensated. We are not going to allow the district to take advantage of our members' willingness to serve and provide a high level of service that is above and beyond what they were hired to do. Many of our members who are attempting to reclass are working mothers, who for years have worked beyond normal business hours. They provide crucial translations during legal meetings and are the reason that site leaders and district leaders are able to communicate with families who may or not speak or understand or read English. Again, many of these members have been providing this service for years without being fairly compensated. Please understand that CSCE supports the district's new initiative of equity, excellence, and empowerment for every student, every day, and this, we want to remind you, can only be achieved if those who are serving their students and the families are treated equitably as well. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes us from our association reports into a public comment. And I see Mario, the, I don't see, I'm having some issues with my Google Docs. I don't see the updated on here, but I know that we have public comment for this meeting right now. I have some public comments specific to issues, but I believe you have general public comments that have come in.
Yes, I've received a total of four requests thus far, general public comments. I'm going to be calling your name, and you will have three minutes to speak unless otherwise specified.
Thank you. And I'll read our disclaimer as we get ready. Do you want to read the first names so that they're ready to come up as I read this?
Yes, the first speaker is Maria Alonso.
Okay, so right after I read, "Members of the public may address the board on topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular board meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know the board is listening to your comment, but by law cannot meaningfully respond to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit of an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the rights of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize the comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation to, of student rights of privacy, and thus, the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it's important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in public board meetings, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, provide more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting laws." And welcome also Stacy Tran, if you want to, I don't know if you need to translate any of them.
What happened?
So this is Maria Alonso, and she belongs to the parent committee. She comes today to talk about an issue that happened pre-pandemic, but she feels like it's not too late to discuss. She wants to let you know about some problems that are happening between parents and site administrators. She knows that it's her responsibility to always report things that she doesn't find just, so that's what she's doing today, a few years after the fact. So she has a child at Elkhorn, and a while ago, another student was bothering her son, so her son did go ahead and hit that kid. So we had a meeting with administration, she asked for forgiveness, she understood that that was not okay, followed up with her son. She did talk to the administration about following up with the other child to resolve the issue, and she even went as far as to make a formal complaint at the district office, and it was never resolved. Of course, COVID hit in the middle of that, so she understands that the district closed down, schools closed down, things closed down, but she feels like to this day, the frustration is still there with her son and with her. She has other young children, and so she just wants to know that you're listening, that the school district is here for parents, and that when there are issues and they do go and talk to their site administrators or to you, the school board, that there will be action, there will be resolution, that parents can come here and know that this is a place that they can speak freely and honestly, and know that you have their kids' best interest at heart. And then also, her son to this day feels, feels the frustration. He's grown from it. They've grown as a family, and, and he's really built trust with her, and he can come to her and express his feelings to her, but she really wants to know that, that you're here. She wants, she wants an assurance that you're here for her and you're listening to her and to our community. So he feels like, that her son feels like he was never heard, the issue was never resolved, he still never got an understanding of why the conflict started with that classmate in the first place. So since then, she's never received another complaint that her son is, is not getting along with people at school, no more fights.
Gracias.
Thank you, and we will make sure that our staff follows up on the formal complaint that was filed, regardless of the extended time. Thank you. Our next public comment is, sorry, Mario, thank you.
The next public comment request is from Maria Rosales Ponse.
Hola, buenas tardes. My nombre es Maria Rosales Ponse. Soy un miembro del comité de padres. La razón por que yo estoy aquí es porque dos de mis hijas fueron agredidas físicamente por compañeros de su escuela. La primera agresión la sufrió mi hija de octavo grado en un evento deportivo de Riverbank. El 13 de octubre del 2022, esa misma tarde, yo le reporté a una trabajadora de homeschool liaison que trabajaba en la escuela de Elkhorn. El 14 de octubre del 2022, el director me llamó diciendo que ya sabía del incidente que pasó y que iba a hablar a Riverbank para comentarles de lo sucedido y ver las cámaras de seguridad, y cuando él tuviera las evidencias, me regresaría la llamada, lo cual yo no recibí ninguna llamada. En el segundo caso, mi hija de sexto grado fue agredida físicamente por una compañera y estudiante de Elkhorn el día 12 de diciembre en el campamento de la escuela en Sly Park, lo cual yo no recibí ninguna notificación de lo sucedido por parte del director ni de nadie de la escuela de Elkhorn. Yo me di cuenta de lo sucedido el 19 de diciembre del 2022 porque notaba rara mi hija, y fue tanta mi insistencia de decirle que porque era su comportamiento así, de que no quería ir a la escuela, no quería estar en Kickson cuando ella no era así. Ella ama estar en la escuela, ama estar en los programas donde ella ejerce alguna actividad, y siempre me decía que nada, hasta que por fin el día 19 me dijo lo que pasó, que había sido golpeada, y mi esposo y yo pusimos una queja el 20 de diciembre en el distrito porque como la primera vez, el director no me escuchó y no hizo nada, por eso nos fuimos directo al distrito, el cual tampoco me ha dado una respuesta hasta ahorita. El viernes 20 de enero y 24 de enero, el director de Elkhorn me llamó por teléfono para dejarme saber que él sabía que yo tenía unas preocupaciones y le gustaría hablarlas conmigo. El 24 de enero, yo fui a la escuela a buscarlo, pero él estaba en una junta. Ayer 25 de enero, pudimos reunirnos para hablar. Él me dijo que él reconocía que como director él nos había fallado, y entendía perfectamente que yo estaba molesta, si yo estaba molesta o no confiaba más en él, lo cual yo le respondí, que por qué después de tres meses del incidente con mi primera hija y un mes después de la segunda, apenas él me estaba contactando para darle seguimiento al caso. Si era, le hice la pregunta y le dije que si era por el, porque él se había enterado que había puesto una queja en el distrito, o si era porque sabía que iba a venir aquí a la junta directiva, el cual él dijo que sí le había dado seguimiento, que él lo había hecho por la plática que había tenido con la trabajadora, con una de sus trabajadoras de la escuela.
This is Maria Rosales Ponse. She has two daughters at Elkhorn who recently have been faced with some aggression from other students. The first incident happened with her eighth grade daughter at a sports event at Riverbank back in October. She immediately reported that event, the incident to the homeschool liaison from Elkhorn. The principal did call her and say that he would review the video footage and return her call and have further explanation, but that never happened. And then secondly, December 12th was the second incident. It happened at Sly Park with her sixth grade daughter. She did not find out until December 19th, when she noticed her daughter was a little off, something was happening, something wasn't right, so she checked in with her, because normally she's very happy and engaged and liked school, her activities, and kids' own, and she notified her mom at that point that another child had hit her at Sly Park. She was never notified by the principal or anyone from the science camp. December 20th, she came to the district office to file a formal complaint, and she did not hear anything until January 24th, when she received a call from the principal. And initially, she went to look for him, he was in a meeting. Finally, they tracked one another down and had a meeting, and he did say that he had, had a misstep in not addressing the situation sooner. Her question is, why does it, she asked the principal, why did I not get any contact until a full month later? Was it because I had to take the step of filing a formal complaint to the district? Was it because at another parent meeting at the district, the topic had come up, and she did share with some school staff and other parents that she may come speak at a board meeting, and that was when the... Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maria Garcia. Como representante del comité de padres, les doy las gracias por esta oportunidad de hablar conmigo. Seguridad dentro de las escuelas. No estamos hablando de seguridad de los padres, que tengan que tener cuidado con los padres que entren a mirar dentro de las escuelas. La seguridad es de, que necesitamos más personal dentro de las escuelas. Tengo como más de cerca de tres años diciéndoles que necesitamos yard dures, pero aparte de los yard dures de las personas que... pero aparte de los yard duties de las personas que cuiden a nuestros hijos dentro de las escuelas, necesitamos mejores horas de trabajo para ellos, mejores sueldos también para ellos. Necesitamos también entrenamiento para todo el personal que está dentro de las escuelas. Estamos dándonos cuenta que hace mucha falta diferentes entrenamientos porque las yard duties no están haciendo reportes, reportes que ellas deberían de hacer. Acabo de darme cuenta que después de, antes de lo que fue diciembre, mi hijo también fue agredido dentro de la escuela de Riverbank. Me acabo de dar cuenta apenas este lunes. Mi hijo fue atacado por un niño por el cuello, lo agarraron del cuello. Supuestamente la yard duty no se recuerda qué fecha fue, no lo reportó. Le dejé saber a la principal, a la viceprincipal sobre lo que está pasando dentro de la escuela de Riverbank. Al parecer van a hacer un reporte pero sin fecha ni van a hacer nada porque no saben exactamente el tiempo que necesitan que fue en el que fue dado ese evento. Acerca del agua, no se me olvida todavía tenemos, y aquí tengo otra vez un examen para hacer un ejemplo de agua dentro de la escuela Riverbank, pero al parecer también no solamente dentro de la escuela de Riverbank está pasando. Tenemos filtros sin cambiar dentro de las escuelas que deberían de haber cambiado desde hace más de seis meses y no los han cambiado. Queremos la igualdad para todos dentro de las escuelas. No puede ser justo que en unas escuelas les estén brindando diferentes cosas a los niños y en otras no. En esta semana también me di cuenta que la escuela de Riverbank no tuvo leche por un día. No sé si hubo más tiempo de que no tuvieron la leche. No se les ha brindado la oportunidad de tener agua a nuestros hijos después de que pasó lo del examen del agua. Necesitamos otro examen del agua recientemente, ahora recientemente, por favor. Necesitamos más tutores y mentores dentro de las escuelas para nuestros hijos, por favor.
So this is Ms. Maria Garcia. She is also a member of the parent committee. She thanks you for the opportunity to be here and speak to you tonight. Her main concern is safety, not parent safety, but student safety. You've heard her speak before several times about the need for more supervision, but just not more staff, but an improved schedule and salary so that we can attract highly qualified people. In addition, she'd like better training for them, especially in regards to reporting procedures. She just found out this week that prior to the new year, her son was involved in an incident where he was grabbed by the neck by another student. She spoke to a yard duty and to the assistant principal, but no report was ever filed, so they couldn't even pinpoint the date that it happened, much less the follow-up. Another concern that she has brought to the board before is the situation about the water at Riverbank. That continues to be a concern for Ms. Garcia. The filters on campus are overdue to have been changed about six months ago. She became, and also in other schools. It also became evident to her that the cafeteria at Riverbank was without milk for a day and the school no longer provides bottled water to students. So she'd like another water test done, please. And in addition, she would like the school district to look into bringing more tutors and mentors to the students.
Thank you, and our final speaker we have is Holly Trezás. And I made a, did I pronounce that correctly? Please correct me if I did. I apologize.
Almost Jolie.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your attention. Gracias por venir todos. I want to start off with talking about some things I'm grateful for. My classroom gets vacuumed every day. That's awesome. I met a teacher in another district who said she's not sure the last time her classroom was vacuumed. I also find that my campus is nice and clean. So that's a testament to the hard work of our custodial staff. I met another teacher in another district. Actually, Richmond is having a rat infestation in her classroom right now. Their union has voted to go on strike, 97.3%. They have a bunch of other issues that they're dealing with, so I'm very grateful for those things. I wanted to draw everyone's attention to this CTA survey about teachers. They interviewed current teachers, aspiring teachers, retired teachers on some issues that are important to them, their thoughts on the educator shortage crisis that we're facing. So we have that crisis, we have our environmental crisis, we have a housing crisis. We're still reeling from the pandemic, so we're all dealing with so much. So here's some things that teachers recommend. And if you could guess the first one and if you would think better pay, you'd be right. If you guessed the second one and say professional development, you'd be wrong. The second most important reason, important thing for teachers is class size. So it's a manageable workload. That's going to help us. And I want to call for, advocate for better pay for our yard staff as well and our classified and CSCA colleagues as well, very important. We're all working really hard and I know our admin are affected too, are pulled in. Some of y'all have come when we've needed substitute teachers and coverage, so I appreciate that. But it's really a crisis that we need to address also in light of recent events such as the high school colleague, the high school teacher who was tased and died in police custody of Los Angeles Police Department. That tragedy coupled with our recent, again, more mass shootings. There's also information about discrimination that teachers feel they're facing in their current roles. So for Hispanic teachers, a total yes was 35%. For API, 54%. For American Indian, Alaska Native, 40%. For black teachers, 62%. So if that's what our colleagues are facing, what are our classified teachers facing and what are our students facing in addition to what they're facing when they step off the campus? Thanks so much for your attention. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay. For my board colleagues, that takes us to about 20 minutes. We've been working to stay at 20 minutes for our public comment. We have two emailed comments and so as has been the practice is we will make sure that those get emailed to you and that they will also get read, put into the public record. But the priority is on the folks that are here in the room. So thank you all for speaking. And that now takes us to, if you can remember our moves, we're going to go into P4, P2, and then P3, and then down into information discussion. So that takes us first to P4, which is our approval of staff recommendations to address the district office facility concerns request. And this is Monique Stovall, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. And why we say this, I'll share. I have some public comment, but if there's other public comment, to please get this in before the end of their presentation, because once we enter into discussion, then we will not keep doing the public comment. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are back for our second conversation on this topic concerning the district office facilities. In our last meeting, there were additional questions that were asked and this evening we're here to be able to answer those questions for you. Again, I'm here with our facilities director, Giselle Geiger, and we will be presenting this item together.
Good evening. For the purpose and overview of tonight's item, we're requesting board direction on options available to house the district office, including modernization, relocating to existing site or leasing space. Our alignment to the strategic plan is whole, child, healthy, safe, challenged and supported. Our equity principles are cultivating healthy relationships. And the four pillars is pillar D, safe climate and equitable access for all. And under pillar D, our system-wide key actions are to ensure every school is safe and welcoming for students, staff and families with uniform standards of contact that are fair to all and discipline practices that are equitably enforced, restorative and eliminate disproportionality by student group. So background and problem. The district is, the district office is one of the district's original campuses and it was built between 1940 and 1960. It's in disrepair and in need of modernization. There's areas that are not ADA compliant and the original business office is not DSA certified and not able to house students. We know that we need approximately 25,000 square feet to house the district office staff, including 20 offices and desks, 50 desks, train space for 50, business area conferencing, storage, break rooms and staff and visitor park. So the options and analysis we wanted to bring to you on this. We looked at leasing options that are available in West Sacramento and one of the things that we were looking for was 20,000 to 25,000 square feet of office space. In West Sacramento, the buildings that are currently on the market are 750 Riverpoint Drive, 100 Waterfront Place and the Parkstone Center. And 100 Waterfront Place was eliminated from our selection as it had a very high cost of rent. The options for the district office were to modernize the existing district office, to switch campuses and go to the Clarendon Campus, to look at leasing Riverpoint Drive or leasing the Parkstone Center. And we wanted to note that the Riverpoint Drive location is 2.3 miles driving distance from the current office and the Parkstone Center is 1.2 miles driving from the current office. So we presented to you at the last meeting the full renovation cost estimate for each option. We looked at one-time costs to modernize existing facilities and when we talked about modernizing the full space, we looked at approximately $15 million of that cost of modernization, a 10-year operating cost of 2.5 million and a total investment of 17.5 million and that was on both the district office and the Clarendon Campus. We looked at tenant improvement costs for 750 Riverpoint of 2.4 million, 7.9 million 10-year operating costs and a total investment of 10.3 million. And then to lease and build out the Parkstone Center, it would be 1.7 million, 7.2 million for a 10-year operating cost and 8.9 million total. Now that with the board's request to come back and answer what that cost would be for 25,000 square feet alone, we prepared those numbers using using data from our current construction projects to develop a cost per square foot. And looking at modernizing an existing facility, the one-time cost for 25,000 square feet would be 7.25 million. The 10-year operating cost would stay at 2.5 million, bringing the total to 9.75 million. And those costs for 750 Riverpoint and Parkstone Center would remain the same. So we also talked about what scope would include in modernization and whether we would need to do the whole campus. We did learn that DSA allows districts to modernize a portion of a campus. However, DSA requires that ADA upgrades be made along all paths of travel to an exit and upgrade to restrooms. So ADA upgrades would require renovations greater than 25,000 square feet. More than 25,000 square feet would be needed when space planning the classroom layouts. So if we're looking at modernizing an existing school building due to the small footprints of classrooms that don't allow for planning efficiency that can be accommodated by an open floor plan office. We also were asked to determine what the potential tenants would be at the leased facilities. Existing tenants at the Parkstone Center include medical offices and other professional office tenants. 750 Riverpoint Drive doesn't have any current tenants, but the space is being marketed to professional office tenants and retail tenants wouldn't be allowed. So our analysis of the options. To modernize, the district doesn't have adequate funding to modernize the district office facility. If we switch campuses, the district also does not have adequate funding to update the Clarendon Campus for permanent use. Leasing space, although this option would increase ongoing costs, the district has the funds available for the one-time and ongoing costs. And looking at our funding availability for these solutions. Redevelopment agency revenue is our property tax funds available for facilities purposes. And the use of RDA funds does not impact any other services or programs for students. We receive 2 to 4 million annually, which is projected to continue through at least 2036 and we currently use approximately 7% of that RDA revenue for debt payment. And we were asked what the carryover balance is and the average carryover. The carryover balance is 4.2 million right now and we have an average of 900,000 in RDA carryover every year. So the availability of funding. We have sufficient RDA revenue to cover the one-time tenant improvement costs associated with leasing and the ongoing costs would be covered by 200,000 from the general fund and approximately 15% of the annual RDA income that is currently not used for debt repayment. Recommendation, we recommend leasing a facility that meets the space needs of the district and available funding. And we thank our team for their help.
To finalize, at this time, what we are asking the board is to be able to provide direction on whether we should move forward with looking at leasing a facility, at modernizing our current facility or modernizing our Clarendon campus so that we are able to do what's in our pillars, provide a safe environment for our staff.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to go into public comment and then we will go into board discussion. So our first public comment was John Stauffer. So John Stauffer, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. I have to admit, I'm very concerned about this item. Given it is being considered at the same time the district is in the middle of the planning for Measure Z. It's got to be that the committee or the community is going to think that the district's trying to pull a fast one and use bond money to make and build fancy offices for district administration instead of allocating the Measure Z funds for the improvement of the north campuses and the performing arts center, the high school. So I think that's an impression that's going to have to be dealt with if you move ahead with this proposal. The tables on page 10 and 11 are based upon 10 years of cost and they estimate full renovation at $600 a square foot and modernization at $360 a square foot. That's a lot of money. And in my humble opinion, only using a 10-years analysis skews the analysis towards leasing space as opposed to staying within the district. And it will have an ongoing negative effect on district finances, especially longer term. This district still has $57 million in COP debt. That arose from a buy now, pay later mentality. It is a continuing drag on district finances and this proposal will only add to that. One thing I'm confused by in the analysis is that why isn't the entire RDA funds, why aren't they being used to pay for our other long-term debt? And why is there any leftover? I don't understand that. But in any case, I agree that there is a need to have an updated district office. But for me, I'm asking you to wait until there's another source of funding and one that keeps the district office on district property. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going in order. So next we have Dani Langford.
Good evening. So first I'd like to say that it really kind of bothers me that this became an information item on December 19th when people are so busy and can't pay attention to what you guys are doing because they're busy with their families getting ready for Christmas. I think the first speaker spoke well about the fact that we need more teachers. And when we're going to drag the general fund with leasing, why are we not going to use that for salaries? That makes no sense. That makes no sense to me. We obviously need a maintenance fund for the issues that our union presidents talked about, especially after things like a rain that we just had. We need to utilize the spaces, I agree 100% with Don Stoffer, that we already have. We own so much property in this district, we don't need to go outside. For instance, if you go to the Clarendon campus and you don't go to the oldest part, but you use the bowtie building, which was considered the art and music building when my son was at, my boys were in the high school, that's one of the newest buildings on that campus. There's a lot of space in that. We have three huge kindergarten classes that we revamped and spent millions of dollars on that campus when we put Westmore Oaks there. There is no reason we cannot turn that into a nice district office if we use the right parts of it. We don't have to go into the old office, you can use the bowtie building. It won awards, for heaven's sakes. And it's a great building. Clarendon was revamped. We spent a lot of money at Evergreen putting some district offices there, and I realize that our current district office is in bad repair. I've been in it a lot over the last 35 years. Trust me, I know all about the buildings in this district. And I may not have been here for a while, but I've been watching and listening to what you guys are saying. We need to pay down our COPs. We don't have money to build any more schools, but yet we're going to have 10,000 more houses going out on Southport with the developments. Where's that money going to come from? We cannot afford to go leasing some other building and not using what we have. Why are we not going to put that money towards the Performing Arts Center? Because we all know Measure Z is not going to have enough money to even do the two projects that you guys are doing. This is ludicrous that you're even considering doing this right now. We need to take care of what we have. And the building at the end of Park and Stone, which used to be our district offices, that medical building, it was back when I first came into the district when my boys started kindergarten, there was zero parking to get there to go to the medical office that you want to go to, because we used to go to that Dr. Lee in there. There's no parking. So what are you going to do with that? This is ludicrous. We need to find different funding. We need to not move on stuff just because we have some money sitting around. Let's put it in the right places. Let's put it where it affects students directly. We don't need shiny new pennies in our district office, especially when you can't even get in there to talk to people like the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Pat Flinch, and after Pat Flinch will be Carrie Corwitz.
Take it way down, sorry. First of all, it's nice to see all of you again. I want to talk about fiscal responsibility. It's something that I've been harping at you guys about for years. You have to be fiscally responsible, because the state of California's funding for schools fluctuates every year. You never know what your state funding is going to be from year to year, including redevelopment money. And that money's going to run out, because we no longer have redevelopment agencies. I think it's fiscally irresponsible to go and lease a building, especially for 10 years, when you'd have no clue what, how much it's going to cost, how much its rent can be raised, and I agree if you sign in a 10-year agreement, it doesn't always get raised, but there's always that possibility. If we go into recession, developer fees go away, because development stops. There was a time you, as a board, three of you especially, had to take money out of the general fund to pay the COPs, because there was no money left to make a payment on your loans. That is irresponsible. That extra money you say you have, well, I'm glad you have it, because deferred maintenance should be part of that budget. We have roofs even in the newest schools in this district that need new roofs or roof repair. There's always ongoing repairs to buildings, whether they're new or old. You need a deferred maintenance budget to take care of those problems. Let's see. A $200,000 annually being taken out of the general fund is irresponsible. That general fund has to fund teacher salaries, it has to fund school supplies, it has to fund teachers. There's no excuse for paying for a leased building when you have so many empty spaces in this district. So I guess the moral is here. If you're not fiscally responsible, then we're going to hold you responsible by other means. And I don't want to sound bad. I love this school district. I have three grandchildren in this school district. I was a school board member for 13 years. Be fiscally responsible. Do not lease space from somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you.
And real quick, this is what you should be looking at for all of your facility problems right now. It was done two years ago, and it's not outdated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I wasn't going to speak, but I just have a few concerns. I agree, the DO is in bad shape. I mean, I've been going in there for 30 years, and it just gets worse and worse. So I understand that something needs to be done. I'm concerned that we're in such a rush right now. I don't understand why we're in such a rush to move the DO. It's not like just all of a sudden it got really bad. So my suggestion is let's stop, slow down a little bit, think it out, plan it out, and do what's fiscally the best thing for our district. As Ms. Flinch just referred to, the 2019 master plan has in there that we would relocate the DO to Clarendon. We paid a lot of money for that master plan. Why are we abandoning that at this point? Clarendon is, should be all ADA compliant. We just had kids on that campus up until last year. So it went through the K8 modernization, and all the ADA should be up to code. And if it's not, then shame on us. I think we could use the north side of the campus easily. The south side has the old portables, the old classrooms, that we didn't even use a lot of those classrooms when we had the students there. But the north side of the campus has the, we could use the gym, we could use cafeteria. We have the big three kindergarten classrooms that were redone and the bowtie building. So maybe let's take a look at that. The other thing is also the DO. I know in the last five years, we put a lot of money into that. We put over $1 million in putting a new roof on that building. We redid the back parking lot, we added new portables, we brought in new electrical. So we've put probably $2 million into that building in the last five years, and we're just going to walk away from that? So let's look and see if we could use one of those sites that we've already invested a lot of money into and make it work for all of us. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, and that takes us through public comment, so now we're to board discussion. Thank you. So I will open it up to my board colleagues for questions or comments. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. There coffee.
Yeah, I have a few questions. Last time we met, trustee Pizzotti and president Herbie Gonzalez, they asked for certain things, and I was curious to know if you were able to obtain those items, one of them being all of the land that Washington Unified School District has that is being used or that is under development or maps of that. I didn't see any of that here, and I'm just wondering, do we have that? I also recall trustee Pizzotti asking for a breakdown of the cost and expenses, and I didn't see that in this as well. So my question is, were you able to find that? Were you able to give it? You have that at home?
We are still working on the list of all of our properties and what state they're in. We're not just looking at our buildings, but we also want to make sure that the list that we have is current and updated for even our park. So that's something that we're working on. We plan to provide you that within the next month. I would like additional information on the breakdown. Unfortunately, I don't recall that request, but we would be more than happy to get that information provided.
Did I speak out on that? Did you notice?
No, I did.
Okay. Just wanted to make. And then, as it was said, this is a 10-year operating cost, and I'm looking at it, and it appears that if we were to do the Clarendon, it's only $1 million more. But yet, we're kind of still going towards the leasing, and is it mainly because we just have the upfront costs to it to start it?
There's a couple of reasons why we recommend leasing. The first is indeed, we do have the costs available to us right now to be able to do what we protect for the tenant improvement. In addition, in the information that Giselle provided, we were able to share a cost for renovating the 25,000 square feet. That's what we know right now. However, in order to make sure that we are ADA compliant and really providing the space that the district office staff need in order to conduct business appropriately, it may be more than 25,000. So these are numbers based upon the information we have right now. Should we get into our space planning, we do anticipate that we will most likely need to renovate more than 25,000 square feet. Thus, the modernization may come up higher than what's projected at 25,000.
So you overprojected for the school sites, but you are underprojecting? I'm thinking, I'm not sure I understand. What?
We made a projection based upon the request to project based upon the 25,000 square feet. That's what we have in the presentation. We anticipate that we'll need to modernize more than 25,000 square feet, but we don't know what that would be right now. So I would say that we may have underestimated, because we only have information for the, we only anticipate.
Okay.
Okay. So I first want to say I'm not opposed to leasing. I'm not opposed to that idea. Part of the things that I asked for was breakdown of our facilities that we had, land that we had. Any way to, if we're going to use a lease, if we're going to do a lease, how can we leverage what our facilities are so that maybe we can negotiate a land swap or a facility swap of some kind, so that we can offer something to a landlord in exchange to reduce the overall 10-year cost that we're looking at? Because the 10-year cost is, if we're going to look at it in those terms, we should be doing a facility that's owned by the district, because 9.75 million is not much, not much more than Parkstone at 8.9, and it's less than Riverpoint. So if we're going to offer those up as comparison, then we should wait and do Clarendon whenever we have the 7.25 million, you know, by that logic. So from that standpoint, I was hoping that we would see some kind of, you know, information brought back in terms of, in terms of what is our update? What is our facility space? How can we use this to get something? Also, what's our plan? What is our plan to do with our empty facilities? I want to know, can we make these revenue generating to offset the 7.2 million in operating costs over 10 years, right? Is there a way that we can say, hey, we're going to lease out the space, and we're going to generate revenue off of that campus? You know, and that means not giving it away at, you know, the reduced rates, which we tend to do when we negotiate with the city or with somebody else. It means getting market rate, right? Or at least closer to it. So those are some of the questions that I had, and trustee Coffee's right, I don't see them in here. One question that I can ask now is, can RDA money be used to supplement construction projects that the district has?
So to circle back to the questions that you had asked last time, thank you for the clarification on the questions that clerk Coffee were referring to. We did have a conversation about a land swap and how we can leverage what we have. Those conversations really occur should we go forward with negotiation? So we did not include that in the written part of the conversation, or I'm sorry, of the presentation, but depending on where we go with the direction that you provide us, that would absolutely be part of the conversation, should you direct.
So before you go on to my second one, then I'm going to ask you to give me some ideas or some suggestions of a plan.
Of a plan.
Of what we could use our facilities for.
Absolutely.
Because we have, you know, if we're going to lease, we want to see some kind of revenue generation, or at least maybe we can do some swap. That's a possibility, that's one part of a plan, maybe. What are your thoughts?
So I appreciate our public comment on the bowtie area at the Clarendon. One of the areas of need for our staff within our district is to be able to address the facilities of our maintenance and operations and transportation. There are currently in portables that they probably shouldn't, and so we need to be able to find an appropriate space for them so that they are, as I like to say, the philosophy we have in facilities. We want our facilities to reflect how we feel about our students and staff. And where our MOT team members are right now, that's not a good reflection of where they are. And so we would like to investigate whether or not that particular area would be the right fit for them. For our district office, some ideas we have, should we, the district office staff, no longer be there, is looking at the appropriate spaces, the usable spaces in the district office that are in what quote "good" repair. Could it be something that's appropriate for some type of adult education or some other, should it be a revenue generating option for us? And so we have some ideas, but we didn't go too far into what we can do, because we really do need some direct.
Okay. So then the second part of that was, was, yeah, can RDA money be used to supplement construction projects?
Yes.
The only, okay, here's my only hesitation with that. We know we're going to be short money on our, or at least we're going to be asked to scale back our desired Performing Arts Center, scale back what we initially wanted it to be. We've already had that conversation. As time passes, construction costs go up with inflation, right? 4.2 million may not seem like a lot, but it does cover that cost, right? It does cover that incremental cost of what it is right now, what we're estimating that cost is. That 4.2 million would certainly mean that we don't have to scale back any further if costs go up another 4% or 8% what they actually have. So I'm a little worried about, I'm a little worried about delving into our fund of our RDA money to pay for facilities that we don't own. I'm not saying I'm a wholeheartedly against it, I'm just saying it's a concern, it's a caution, without some kind of plan in place that would include maybe a revenue generation use of our facilities. So those are just thoughts. I'm done.
Yeah, I'll keep mine short. Thank you to the community for coming out and just sharing your perspective. I think for me, you know, a question that I guess it was more of a blind spot in a sense is, if the plan is to lease, I think what we would, what I I think what we would, what I would want to hear is how, what's the plan to repurpose? Like how to use those facilities? If it's a 10-year plan, for example, to lease, is there an idea of pivoting back and coming back to the district? And, you know, having the offices back on, on district land in a sense? I think it's just more to be able to see the visual of not just leaving a bunch of empty buildings that we could be using. But I think that's, that's it for me really is if the idea is to go out and lease, I'd also want to know how do we not create a vacuum or just leave empty, empty spaces?
So you all know that I'm a process person. My suggestion is that some of this should have been vetted in the facilities before y'all brought it to us, quite frankly.
I agree.
Right? Like, but you all decided to move it after the discussion, so I'm gonna.
Actually, that's not true.
On December 18th, I came to the full board after I'd been to facilities. So my, my suggestion is that there seems to be some unanswered questions that I would suggest to go back to facilities is the proper place to vet this out before it comes back to the entire board? Because now we spent two board meetings on something that should have been vetted in facilities. So before it comes back to full board, my suggestion is facilities, do that work. I'm sorry, I just like, okay, like if we had, if the two facilities person had questions, why didn't you ask it in facilities before it came back here? That's my, that's just my suggestion on process because I'm a really big process person. We have subs for a reason, and that work needs to be done in the subs.
My understanding was the recommendation from the facility committee was a lease. Is that an accurate statement?
Well, it was a lease was certainly something to look into, but it wasn't, we didn't, we didn't come up with a recommendation that this needs to go forward to the board. Because I don't recall seeing it come direct, seeing, I don't recall remembering saying that we're ready to move forward to the board. I thought we were going for more information. But maybe I'm wrong. I could be wrong. But I don't know what your recollection was. The next thing I remember was seeing it on the agenda. And I didn't know if we were going to have another, another facilities meeting to discuss this or not. So that's my recollection. I don't, like I said, I don't have the best memory.
Instead of cashing all that out too, I just want to bring up that we have the SVA architect piece too. I pulled it and looked at it. And the campus is in poor overall condition as a result of being one of the district's original campuses. We know that about district office, that it's not an appropriate setting to have staff, just like we've been addressing situations that are not appropriate for our kids. Right? Which was first and foremost. And so I want to give the assurance right now very clearly that no matter what happens with any of this conversation, Westfield is moving forward. It's been approved. We are remodeling Westfield. Elkhorn is moving forward. We've approved that money to remodel it. Performing Arts Center, it is true that the initial plan was a very large, larger than most in our area, Performing Arts Center. And so we discussed that that might need to be scaled more in line with other districts. Can we have that assurance before we move forward on anything else? To make sure that's very clear to the community that that is a separate conversation?
Absolutely. So we are moving forward with Westfield. Are very far in the design phase and pretty excited about it. We are moving forward with our Elkhorn project. And next, we're moving forward with our performing arts project for your direction. We have $150 million bond. And what our charge is, is to make sure that we use that money to make sure that we meet the needs of our students. And that's how we're moving with our project.
Thank you. And the roof comment that was brought up earlier, we know that Westmore Oaks has been remodeled and we're so proud of it, one of our newest places. And thank you to our principal who's here as well. And that roof was, we had not approved in the bond money, that roof to be remodeled. But is that, was that on the plan? Will that be repaired? Was that already earmarked? Can you speak to that?
Absolutely. So the Westmore Oaks roof was already in our deferred maintenance plan. And you all last year approved the contributions into deferred maintenance that we have been doing for the last, well, we did it last year and the year before. And so yes, it is part of our plans, including many other projects throughout our district using deferred maintenance funds and also using our COVID funds so that we can bring our, our schools up to the standard that we want for our students.
Thank you. And then that also goes with the gutter replacements that have been going, the water stations that are going into every single school site and all of those pieces as well?
You are correct.
Thank you. Okay. There were recommendations for this campus that were made. There were a variety of ones. District office reuse the site for another district function. We know we can't house students on it. It's inappropriate. If we have a member, a staff member who works right across the street or a parent or anyone else who comes in a wheelchair, they cannot get into the district office, which is unacceptable, frankly. We know, and that's the only site in the district you can't get into, you know, you literally cannot get in that front door. And so also relocating to Westmore Oaks on Claritin was one of the options, as was leasing the building, selling the property and some others. And we did talk as well about leasing the property would, I imagine, be incredibly problematic if we're leasing a property that's not appropriate, not ADA compliant and everything else. But what I want to just make sure I understand, one of the challenges I'm hearing is that you are not entering into a conversation to see, can you do a land swap? Can you do a trade? Because we haven't given an okay to have those conversations. Is that, am I saying that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. If we, we are in no way approving anything tonight. We don't have a contract in front of us. We're not approving it. But if we approve that conversation to happen, then it can come back to us and know what are the possibilities? Are there a possibility with land swap or other pieces? And I'm wondering if the board feels comfortable with something like that.
I'm going to defer to the facilities group because I do trust subs. So I'm going to look at you both because you clearly had more questions today that should have been answered in the subs. So I'm going to look at you both since we've appointed you to that sub and take your lead because I want to trust my colleagues in that discussion.
Yes, to answer your question, I would feel comfortable moving forward because it sounds like in conversation, this is not an approval of a contract. It's an approval to continue to move forward and find, find options and see what we're talking about when we're talking about land swap or what possibilities there are. I don't think that we can, based on the understanding, we can't ask more of those questions if we don't have some sort of, some sort of direction or idea without having those conversations. So I would feel comfortable moving forward.
And I would say this, I've never had a problem with the lease idea. I have a problem with not hearing more about it. And I did have questions about this. But if what you need in order to develop a plan with other, with other uses for our facilities that could be revenue generating and offsetting some of the cost is our approval to go forth with negotiations of whatever, then I would say yes. I would say yes to that. I don't have a problem with moving forward at that point. I will say, I will reserve my right to vote no on anything that does not find some way to reduce costs and find use for our facilities. I don't want to use all of our RDA money for a lease on any. Or that's just my particular standpoint. I'm not speaking for any of my other board members. That's just me.
I make a suggestion, if this moves forward, that it doesn't come back to a full board vote until you all work out the details in facilities? Because I do not want, I do not want to have another, like it just, that's why we have subs, right? Like if we're, the authority today is just to begin the conversation so that we can figure all these questions out? Can you all just commit to working out those questions in facilities that's just public? I mean, that's what you all are suggesting?
I would think that's where the negotiated peace would come back to anyway, right?
May I share a comment? And so just a reminder, this evening was to get direction on where do we go? Because we absolutely did not want to begin down a road that you all were not interested in. And so once we go down the road that you all direct us to, then naturally we would come back to the facility subcommittee, have a conversation. Typically, we will finish the subcommittee and then it's an information item, more questions, more answers before we get to an act.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So if people are comfortable or whatever it might be, if I can get a motion? Motion to, okay. Do you know what your move, do you want to restate it just so we make it very clear?
Yeah, so giving, giving direction to be able to have, continue to have those conversations. Because I know for me, and I just want to know, again, as we're moving in a direction, what options and what are we going to learn? Because the conversation continues and it seems like it's, there's no progress if we don't move. So yeah, just.
Motion to move forward and then come back to the facilities?
Yes, yes.
Is there a second?
Hold on a second.
Okay, so the motion was made by trustee Venegas, seconded by trustee Pazati. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Okay, thank you. So that takes us to our next item. And thank you everyone for your patience to P2, which is, let me go back through all of our moving of things. Approval of the Washington Unified School District 2021-22 Independent Audit Reports of the District Financial Statements. And that is again Assistant Superintendent of Business Services Monique Stolz.
Thank you very much. And we truly appreciate moving this item up. So our consultants are able to be here and kind of respect their time. This evening, for this particular item, our partner Jesse Dill from, excuse me, James Martyr, Martha and Company will be presenting the results of our audit, our financial audit, and I will pass it on to you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and give you the financial highlights of the district audit as of June 30th, 2022. So you have a couple of communications in front of you. You have the governance letter, then you have the actual audit report. And then that audit report contains not only the audit opinion, but then it has the internal control letter, the state compliance audit report, and then the federal compliance report. And so the scope of the engagement, and it's also outlined in the governance letter, we were engaged to conduct a financial audit over the governmental activities, the major funds, the remaining aggregate funds. And then we have the notes of the financial statements that highlight all the significant accounts and all the required disclosures. And then we have some required supplemental information, which is from the state compliance audit guide and then the supplemental information. Starting with the governance letter that you have, it's a separate communication. The biggest thing you want to take away from this, we did not incur any issues during the course of the audit. We issued an unmodified opinion, means a clean audit, if you will. During the course of the audit process, we do conduct inquiries at the interim phase and the year-end phase. We also contact the board to see if there's any concerns, anything that we need to investigate. All in all, we did not have any outside consultations, with no disagreements, no difficulties during the course of the audit. And we did receive the appropriate representations from the management team. So that basically means that everything they provided us was true and accurate to their knowledge. Couple of significant items that were also pointed out in the governance letter are some estimates. So we looked at the methodology that the, the management team has for receivables and appeared reasonable for us. So no issues there. And then we do have the net pension and the OPEB liabilities, which are taken from actuarial valuations. So we tested the underlying support that went to those actuaries. And then we also looked at the assumptions and they appeared reasonable. So we assisted the district with implementing those items on your actual audit reports. We did look at all the policies and procedures that the district has in place. And then we tested those to make sure that what the district is telling us is what they're actually performing. Again, no issues noted there. And that's just called the test of controls. Again, just to summarize, everything went as planned. No findings, no issues, no adjustments. All the, the financial statements that you have in front of you are true and accurate as of June 30th, 2022. And so I'm going into the actual audit report now on pages one through three. You'll see our audit opinion. And again, it's an unmodified opinion. Following the audit opinion is the management discussion analysis that just highlights what transpired during the fiscal year. So that's management summary. So if you don't want to read the entire 80-plus page report, I do encourage you to read the MDNA. In regards to the MDNA, I pulled a couple of items to discuss. We have this summary statement of net position. And so this kind of highlights what happened overall. So our total assets are up 831,000. The deferred items are in relation to the actuarial evaluation. So the OPEB and the pension liability. So because those have different measurement dates, so we, they actually turn into deferred items because we have a different fiscal year. So the liabilities went down 42. almost 6 million. And then the deferred inflows and outflows, you can see that the deferred outflows went up by 1 million. And the deferred inflows went up 24.6 million. Did want to kind of dive into the liabilities decrease a little bit. Now, I just mentioned that the actuaries are a, have a different measurement date. So focusing on the pension liability, we're looking at the 2021 results. And so if you recall what happened in 2021, the investments were up at that point in time. So the planned assets in the Pers and Sturs investment pools were inflated, decreasing the pension liability for that year. Now, we're in fiscal year 2022 as I'm reporting right now. So you're actually showing a smaller liability. So that 42, almost 43 million decrease that you see, or almost 40 million of that is a decrease in the pension liability. I just want to highlight that because what happened in 2022? Our investments are down 20 to 25%. I really want to plant that seed because when we do the audit for 2023, this is going to go the other way. So your liability is going to increase by at least 40 million, if not more. Okay, so I just want to plant that seed. I know there's some concerns about the COP and the other items. So they're all going to be in the long-term liabilities, but no. Just want to highlight that. And that's the reason why the deferred inflows went up so much. Because all of those unrealized gains, that's where they're sitting right now. Okay, and they're just being amortized by a five to seven year, depending on the different items that the actuary pointed out. And also their inflation factor is like 2.75 or 2.5%. It's in the long-term debt, but no, and you guys know inflation's a lot higher than, than that. So I just wanted to point that out. So all in all though, net position is up almost 20 million. So that's good news. Again, a lot of that has to do with the decrease in liability. So I just want to highlight that. So this is actually where I took that information from. And so this is the condensed version. So this is like a balance sheet, if you will. And so you can see your total assets increased just by a small margin, less than 10%, so 0.2%. And then you can see the, the, you can see the red box is there. That's the pension effect there. Summary statement of activities, this is like the income statement, if you will. You can see revenues went up by 8 million. So a lot of that was the one-time funding. You had some redevelopment funding grants. And so not a whole lot that you can expect. I know you guys have the update for what's going on in the current state of. in the current state of... We're in a deficit. We're going to be probably going into that rainy day fund. There are a couple one-time funds available, but I don't know how much this district is going to get. I'm sure Monique and Billy are going to be presenting that to you. But I just want to bring this up. The revenues were up, and the... But the expenses were also up as well. All in all, we did have an increase of about 7.9 net position from the year prior. So just be aware of that going into the future because there's a lot of uncertainty. Focusing on the general fund, you can see a lot of our funding is coming from the LCFF funding factor. So that's one of the items in the LCFF is the ADA. And you guys have been declining enrollment for a while, but you did, as of the adopted budget, you did have an increase budgeted. So I'm not sure where we are right now, but I just wanted to point out, majority of the funding for this district is coming from the LCFF. And so just be aware of that. And then focusing on expenditures from the general fund, you can see most of it's for salaries and benefits. So just be mindful. I know everybody's dealing with the not getting paid enough. I see that with LEAs all across in my 35 districts that I audit. So I know it's a pain. Just be mindful, physically responsible. The financial trends analysis, I'd like to bring that up just because you can see where we were the last couple of years, where we ended, and then what we were budgeting. And this is, again, as of the adopted budget. So things have changed since then. But I did want to point out, if you look at the middle of the screen, there was a change in fund balance. You can see the last few years, we did have a surplus. But then you can see, as of the adopted budget, we did budget a deficit of 4.3 million. So that's why I wanted to bring those items up to your attention. And at the bottom there, you can see the long-term liabilities. It has been increasing, and then we had that decrease because of the pension. So we don't have the... We didn't have the data available at the time to project what was going to be of the adopted budget. So all it is, is the actual long-term debt minus the current portion. That's it. Okay? So... But again, you can see the ADA at the bottom there as well. The other thing I wanted to point out on this slide was... Uh-oh. Sorry about that.
Are you trying to go back?
I'm trying to go back. Thank you. The available reserves as a percentage of ALCO, you can see that it declined. But we are still meeting the minimum reserve, which is 3% for the district this size. So that's good news there. But we should start to focus to see, how can we get that back up just because of the uncertainty that we have? And then this slide is just for the ADA. Over the last few years, you can see where we were and then where we ended as of June 30th, 2022. Now, focusing on the other results. So I let off with the unmodified opinion on the financial audit. We did conduct a state compliance audit as well. No findings noted there. So unmodified opinion on the state compliance with laws and regulations. And then the internal control, it's not really an opinion, but we have to basically see if any deficiencies were identified during the course of the audit. And so I'm pleased to present to you, it was no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses noted. So it was clean. Good business practices by the district office. So there's proper checks and balances. In regards to the federal compliance audit, so basically, anytime an agency receives 750,000 or more in federal funding, it triggers what they call a single audit. So it's a federal compliance audit. We did perform a federal compliance audit, which also entails looking at the internal controls over those grants. And again, unmodified opinion and no deficiencies noted. So clean sweep all the way across. And so wanted to, again, summarize, district has improved the financial condition. Your management team is doing a good job. And I wanted to thank Monique, Billy, and the rest of the district staff for their assistance with the audit process. With that, I'll leave it up to you guys for any questions before I move on to the next presentation.
Thank you. I know we have at least one public comment, which we'll do first.
Sure.
And so I'll bring that up. And I don't know if we have any other public comments as well on the audit report.
No, just the one that was pre-submitted.
Okay. Don Stoffer.
Hello again. I have some questions from the audit. On pageated the audit report itself, it's on page 12 of the PDF. The interest on long-term debt was 6.4 million dollars per year. How is that paid? How much of it is paid from redevelopment? How much of it comes from our developer fees? And how much of it comes from general funds? On Table 5, which is on page 10 of the report or page 14 of the PDF, why isn't the qualified school construction bond balance decreasing? And when or how will it be paid off? And isn't it the case, or at least it was, when this bond, as well as the Clean Renewable Energy Bond, when they were taken on by the district? The district was assured that the cost of those bonds would be paid for by the energy savings from the solar systems and other energy conservation measures that we're taking. Is this the case? And is there a report we can see on that? If they are paying for themselves? And I then... Thank you for your discussion of the pension liability. Can I assume that the liability refers to the fact that the current fund balance at CalSTRS would not cover 100% of the potential retiree liabilities? Okay. Well, I happen to know that as of today, the fund balance is back over 300 billion. And so it's pretty much at the same place it was on June 21. So even though it was kind of a bloodbath last year, since June, things have been on the up and up with our pension fund. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I'll open it up to the board. Any comments on the board?
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I am on... Mr. Stoffer did actually hit on a couple of things that I think are important. One was the OPEB question. And that was my... That's always been a concern of mine is, do we have enough in our trust, in our rainy day trust for OPEB to cover any, you know, shortfalls when the district falls on a hard time?
We do not have an OPEB trust. However, last year, along with the deferred maintenance fund, you approved us making contributions to the OPEB fund. So we will continue to make those contributions so that we can begin to manage that liability.
Okay. And is... Would you say the... I don't know if it's pension liability or OPEB liability, either one of those, because they are two different things. There are benefits, and one is pension. So are either of those liabilities, would you say, with the amount we've invested into our savings or our fund, manageable at this point?
I would like to go and look back at that data to be able to provide you a correct and accurate answer.
Because I know we did take a look. Right, last year was rough. And I do understand that because I'm in a 401K, and I have to work seven more years, right? Because of it. So even PERS and STIRS took hits. But as I was mentioning, we are climbing out of it, and it does look better. So that was a question of mine. Like, when we have highs and lows in the market, as we've had, you know, where are we from the standpoint? And what you did when you first came here was initially a, you know, an establishment or get approval to start funding our pension liabilities, right? That was a brilliant move, and I love it. And I'm just hoping that we can continue on that trend so that when the day becomes rainy, we do have the ability to turn on the spigot and say we have to... We have the ability to mitigate certain, you know, certain liabilities. I can't remember the exact way Mr. Stoffer phrased it, but it was his very first question. And then I'm hoping somebody else on our panel can remember it. So I'm just going to pass.
Do you want to speak to any of the questions you heard? And I heard specifically the solar, which, when we had approved the solar, it's true, we talked about, you know, thinking that would be a cost benefit and the bond decrease, if any of these...
Mr. Stoffer asked really great and important questions. And along with our fiscal director, we constantly monitor our debt payment, and we have a debt schedule so that we're looking out multiple years from now. What I request is that you allow us to provide you a written summary, again, so we provide the accurate information so that we can be able to respond to whether or not our savings, energy conservation savings are helping to support our CREB payments. Also, exactly what percentage of our developer fees, of our other revenue, including our RDA, is going toward the various debt.
Thank you. Okay. And, oh, this is an action, correct?
Yes.
We need to do these separately, and then we'll do the next one. So can I have a motion? My paper's gone all changed, how we moved all these around. This is number... A motion to approve the Washington Unified School District 2021-2022 Independent Audit Reports of the District Financial Statements.
I move.
Okay, thank you. Move by Vice President Wong.
Hold on a second.
Seconded by trustee Pizzati. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you vote aye? Thank you. So now that takes us to item P3 under action, which is approval of the Washington Unified School Districts 2021-2022 Independent Audit Reports of the Measure V and the Measure Z Bond Performance and Financial Statements.
All righty. So I'll just briefly go into it. You guys know that we have some bond measures passed. And focusing on Measure V, you can see Series A and B were issued in 2015 and '17 for the 24.9 million, respectively, for a total of the 49.8 million. So what we did is we verified that when the district did receive these funds, that they were deposited in the correct funds as directed when they were issued. So no issues noted there. In regards to Measure Z, so far, we had Series A issued in 2021 of 60 million. And then we verified, again, that was separately tracked from the other measure, and it was also properly recorded on the district's financials. You do have a separate communication, just like I did, I went over on the district audit. So this basically talks about the scope of the engagement, what we're supposed to be doing. Biggest thing you want to take away from this, on both of the measures, we had an unmodified opinion on the financial audit. And then there's a performance piece as well, unmodified opinion on the performance audits for both measures. Again, we come out, we perform inquiries, we do the test of controls. We make sure that the district is separately recording this away from all the other funds and are only spending these funds on the purpose that they were approved for. So the bond measure text, we basically go one-on-one to look to see if that they're in compliance. So in focusing back on the governance letter, no additional consultations were needed, no disagreements or difficulties encountered during the course of the audit. And we did receive the appropriate management representations to be able to conclude on the audit. So in regards to the estimates, and this one is just the accounts payable. So what happens is sometimes these invoices come in from the contractors. We had to look at the methodology the district management is applying to record this as a liability. It's just basically timing of when those invoices are received. So we didn't have any issues with their methodology. And then, again, no issues when we did the test of controls. To give you a summary, no findings, no control deficiencies. And everything that you have in front of you is true and accurate as of June 30th, 2022. Now focusing on the actual audit reports, you'll see on pages one and two of both of the measure reports, you'll see that we had an unmodified opinion. So that basically means that the financials were in conformity with the appropriate accounting standards, and they're free of material misstatement. So this is us talking about the balance sheet and the income statement. So this is... I'm actually condensing it just to speed things up. You can see Measure V and Z here. You can see the balance sheet here. We ended with 695,948 for Measure V. And then Measure Z is 58.2 million. And then you can see the accounts payable in the middle of the screen there. And then you can see this entire amount is restricted for the bond measures that they were passed for. And then how we got there, you can see the next slide here is the income statement, if you will. Can you help me go? Thank you. The revenues on a bond, it's literally just the investment income. So the unspent money is accruing interest. That's all it is. Okay? And so you'll see a negative there. That's just because of... So we had to present the fair market value. And so we didn't have a positive value there. And because the most of the money is in Measure Z, that's what got bulk of the negative interest income. So next year, you should expect it to go up, hopefully. Focusing on expenditures, so this is where we do most of our work. We want to make sure that the community and the board has peace of mind. We've tested over 85% of each of the bond measure. So you guys understand that the management team is doing what they're supposed to be doing with these funds. So they are spending it within accordance with the bond measures for what they were passed. So that... And that's what the performance audit is all about. So this is the financial audit piece, the fair presentation of it. And you can see at the bottom, fund balance as a 630 for Measure V was 662,000. And then for Measure Z, it's 58.2 million. And I mentioned, we did a performance audit, unmodified opinion on that. And so basically, we looked at all the expenditures, and we made sure that they were in accordance with the bond measure text. We wanted to make sure that the system that the district has in place is separately tracking this. So there isn't anything where they're spending Measure B on Z and vice versa, or anything else in the district that they're not supposed to be spending it on. So this is all restricted funds. So the biggest risk with bond audits or bond proceeds is literally looking at any conflicts of interest, any change orders, because that's where things can go wrong. Right? So we looked at any time there was a change order to make sure the district policies and procedures were followed. And so everything was appropriate. And if it wasn't, we would pick up the phone and call the Citizens Oversight Committee and the board and let them know of the misappropriation, if there was one. So you guys didn't hear from us, so good news in that regard. But in conclusion of the performance, no issues were noted. And then in regards to the internal control, no deficiencies were noted. So no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So with that, just wanted to thank Monique and Billy and the rest of the district staff for their hard work. There's a lot that goes into the bond audits as well, but they did a great job. So with that, I'll leave it up to you guys for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I have no public comments unless any have come in. Nope, we have no public comments on this item. So are there any more comments? So are there any more comments? Okay. I want to thank you all for, for your work on this and see if I can get a motion.
I'll move.
Okay. Moved by, uh, Trustee Pasati.
Seconded.
Seconded by Clerk Coffee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Me too, vote aye. Thank you very much.
Before we end, I would like to just take a moment to really thank our new fiscal director, Billy Duba and his team for doing just an exceptional job on helping us to manage our finances properly and really be responsive during these audits. I think they did an amazing job and I'm so proud to be part of their team.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Okay. And that takes us now, we do not have a public hearing. So now that takes us to information discussion item. Thank you all for being here. Um, so that's the 2022 California school dashboard, data dashboard update. And this is Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Dan Waycich.
Uh, tonight, we're here to, uh, provide the Board of Trustees and our community an overview of the 2022 California Dashboard, um, and to give you some local comparisons of California Dashboard results around the area. Um, I'm of course joined here by my fabulous team in Ed Services, all wearing blue tonight. Um, this, 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 uh, rising of color coordination is not due to my leadership, but, um, I, I do appreciate it nonetheless, uh, to have such a creative, nice, nice, well-organized team. So that's wonderful.
You see three of us are also in blue.
You know, I noticed that. So yeah, you got the memo somehow. So for, for almost everybody and then, you know, I think everybody but Coach. Okay. So, um, thank you very much. Um, as, as always in our presentations, uh, we want to share our alignment with a strategic plan. Um, and the dashboard is comprehensive. It goes through many areas and it is in alignment with all goals for student success, all equity principles and all four pillars in our, in our strategic plan. A little bit of an overview of what the dashboard is. It's been a couple of years since we've done a dashboard presentation, uh, because the state did cancel it for a bit, uh, while we were going through COVID. Uh, so the dashboard is like a report card, uh, for our schools and school districts, uh, communicates how schools and school districts are doing, um, how much they've improved, uh, establishes common standards. Um, it also identifies schools and districts that may need extra support, um, and focuses attention on basically eight state priorities. Um, it is intended to help us inform our annual budget and our strategic planning processes. In other words, it is a cycle. So we are supposed to look at this data, make adjustments, uh, make improvements as we go. Uh, so one of the biggest key areas that, of our planning that this impacts, of course, is our, um, our local control and accountability plan, our LCAP. So the LCAP is a plan that uses this data to identify our needs and specializes and specifies what resources and actions that we need to reach our goals, uh, for these improved student outcomes. So as mentioned, uh, there are different priorities. Uh, we will not cover all the priorities in the dashboard. Uh, several of them have been covered with you already back in June. As you may recall, in June, um, in every June, you will get a report on what we call local indicators. So districts present local indicators at a regularly scheduled board meeting. Uh, these, this data is subjective, uh, and it's measured by the district staff, um, and the, and the community. So this data is self-reporting to CDE. Um, it, its ratings are basically met or not met. Um, and, um, as I said, we had did that presentation with those local indicators back in June. So tonight, what we're going to talk about are the actual state indicators, uh, state indicators. And, uh, that is basically pulled out of CALPads. Um, the measures are objective, they're across the state objective. For example, a suspension in one school district is also the same, it has the same meaning as a suspension in another school district. Uh, ratings range from very low, uh, to very high. And of course, that's the focus that we're going to have tonight is on state indicators such as, uh, graduation rate, chronic absenteeism, suspension rates, academic performance in ELA and math as measured in our CASP testing, um, as well as English learner progress. Typically, the college and career readiness is another indicator. However, that one won't be happening. The state did not, uh, choose to use that indicator this year. So there are some differences. As I pointed out, it's been a few years since we did this, uh, presentation because we just haven't had a dashboard. And, um, if you remember in prior dashboard reporting years, um, you would remember that, uh, the state indicators were reported through the use of colors. So you had blue, green, yellow, orange and red. Uh, blue represented the highest performance level while red represented a lower performance level. Um, these performance levels were determined, determined using two years of data, um, meaning that you would compare one year for the other. So regardless of where your points or percentages were, it would compare to another year. So if you improved, um, even if your score may have been low, it would show a color closer to green or blue. Um, that's different this year. Um, so this year, the dashboard will report its scores using purple bar charts, um, rather than that five-color gauge that we're used to from previous years. And as I mentioned earlier, the college and career indicator, um, will not be presented in 2022. Um, I think, uh, one of the greatest, biggest differences that we have to acknowledge is that, uh, between 2018 and 2019, uh, the cycle of identifying areas where support was needed, uh, the monitoring progress, the plans that were prepared, um, and the implementation of those plans, uh, that was all very severely impacted over the past few years. And our staff, um, well, our staff went through hell. Um, and I'm sure, and that's the case for other districts as well. Um, so that, that's a big difference. It's not just time, it's not just technical changes from one dashboard to the next. It, we do have to remember, remember that there was a big difference in what happened during that time, uh, between those years. Sorry about that. So the dashboard, uh, is very focused on 13 different student groups, uh, which are listed, um, on that slide. Um, what you may also know is that, um, some scores or some groups may not be reported in the dashboard if there are less than 30 students enrolled within that test, within that group. So, um, there'll be some slides where you may have some missing groups for our district because the group percentage is too small, uh, and was not reported on the dashboard. Uh, thought you'd like to take a look at the demographics of our district, uh, last year as, which is what is on the dashboard. Um, and you can see what our, our biggest groups are, uh, all the way down to our lowest groups, um, as far as demographics go with the 13 groups that are measured on the California So let's take a little bit of a look on how, uh, the state measure is calculated and how did WSD do. So just, just a reminder, we're using the purple bar charts, uh, at this point. Um, so having just one bar chart in purple means that you have a very low score and then you go all the way to getting five bar charts, which, uh, indicates in the dashboard that you have a high score. Uh, once again, the state level's reflected, uh, in these, in these indicators, our academic performance for ELA and math, uh, chronic absenteeism, English learner progress, graduation rate and the suspension rate. And once again, the college and career readiness will not be on this dashboard. Apparently it's going to resume again in 2023. So this is looking at, um, like districts, similar districts to Washington Unified across, uh, California. Um, so it was noted, uh, that, uh, in our research, that there were 52 unified school districts that were very similar to ours with enrollment, um, and, uh, their population of unduplicated. Um, so, um, on the, on one side here, I'm going to do my, um, try to see if I can use this doohickey here, uh, little laser pointer. Um, so over there, you can see that the number next to each indicator shows you where we rank in comparison to the similar schools. Uh, so if you look over here on the right-hand side, you see some numbers next to each one of those actual, um, uh, indicators. So for example, for English Language Arts, if you take those 52 similar districts across California, um, we would be, uh, the seventh highest out of that group of 52 similar like districts. Um, so what you can see is that, um, in all these indicators, uh, on five out of six, uh, our district is in the top 10 of, in terms of rank. So you can see that suspension rate is the one that we were, um, lowest on, um, and we're smack dab in the middle. So 26 being out of 52 districts, we're, we were ranked, uh, 26 when comparing dashboard results, uh, for 2022. So let's look, let's take a look at academic performance. Uh, this is the English Language Arts and Math Standards. Uh, the testing is in CASP, which is done, uh, every spring, uh, for students in grades three through eight and 11. So that was previous year's spring testing. So these are students, these results were students who took it last spring in 2022. This data was, we, we did report CASP data to the, uh, Board of Education back in August, uh, to give you an idea of where our students were. Um, as you can see, we, um, are ranked low on the California dashboard with, uh, two bars and where our students are 23 points below standard, um, in this category. Uh, 23, 23 more points and we would be at zero, um, which would put us even. So if we get it 24 points, that means we're above, uh, we're above that meridian. And as you can see, uh, one of the big indicators here, um, is that in our dashboard from 2018 to 2019 compared to our current dashboard, um, you can see that results, um, decreased for every single group with the, in ELA, with the exception of our Filipino group. Uh, all the other groups actually decreased from, uh, 18, 19 to 21, 22. Similar in math, um, you can see it's even, it's an even, um, bigger decrease than in ELA, uh, across all our, um, groups. Um, and that's very, again, that's something we'll talk about a little bit later too with some of our other measures. We're trying to compare as many as we could to 18, 19. Uh, we do have some current results as well to show you of how we are doing in terms of progress. Uh, so later in the next presentation, um, we can let, let you know, um, where our students are currently, um, with standards, uh, with ELA and math as we monitor throughout the So we are this year, um, in, able to do a better job of ongoingly monitor our student progress through the year using our eye-ready diagnostic tool. Uh, so that gives us results on how well our students are doing throughout the year rather than waiting for just the CASP result at the end of the year. In addition, our PLC, our professional learning communities, uh, are collaborating, they are analyzing student data, uh, to try their best to accelerate learning, uh, and provide that targeted support. Um, we are looking at all our strategic programs to see how we can make them, uh, better and more effective, uh, including, um, intervention tutoring and mentoring. Um, all our, all our sites, um, turn in a SIPSA at the end of the year. Uh, that's a school, uh, that's a school-wide plan for student achievement, a single plan for student achievement. And in that plan, um, our leaders cite examples and actions of what they want to approve upon and how they will approve upon it. And so, um, that during this cycle, obviously, um, our, our leaders will be looking at their plans to see, uh, to better match, uh, their, whatever supports are needed for, uh, targeted students. Uh, in addition, uh, we, we have been, um, working hard to develop very solid professional learning for our staff for readiness, uh, which includes, um, helping teachers with differentiation with the wide levels of, of, of student abilities in the classroom. Um, also working on, uh, the questioning levels and the, um, the depth of knowledge for students to get the, the academic practice that they need. Um, in addition, we have invested quite a bit in our social emotional learning to make sure students are in a good place when, when they're in the classroom. Uh, we are trying to become much more targeted with our professional development, finding out ways to reach more staff. Uh, we've noticed that that has been a difficult thing for us to do, uh, in the past year. Um, it has been a challenge this year as well, but we are looking on ways to, um, reach more staff and are looking at better incentives, uh, for staff to be able to attend professional development so they can get that training. Um, I will say, I think this is a good opportunity for me to say, we just recently had a professional learning day, um, in our district. Um, it was fantastic. Uh, Director of Curriculum Instruction, Professional Learning, Matthew Ainsworth, um, led this process. Um, he did a pretty, he did so outstanding, I don't know what he's going to do to up that next year. But, um, he, 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 he very, he and the Ed Services team and all the different trainers, presenters, instructional coaches, um, did a pretty, did a fabulous job. I think you all would be very proud, uh, of the effort that was put to make that happen for our staff. And, um, we're looking to do more of that. Um, we're, it, it's actually inspired us to figure out, um, more opportunities to do that. So, um, looking forward to that. Uh, the next indicator that we're going to talk about is the English learner progress indicator. And who better to explain that than our Director of, um, English Learners, which is Stacy Trent.
Good evening again. Uh, I'm excited to talk to you about the English learner progress indicator, also called endearingly the LP. Very cute. Um, it's the first time the LP is on the California data dashboard. Thank you. Um, because the assessment changed and then we didn't have a second year of data and then COVID hit. So I'm excited that now it is on the dashboard being measured. So it shows the progress of our English learner students, not only how their growth on the LPAC assessment, which stands for English learner proficiency assessment for California, but also the number of students that were able to successfully reclassify each year. And as you will see, we've made some great progress. So on the next slide, see you. Thank you. I'll talk from left to right. I have four graphs for you. The first one is taken straight from the California data dashboard and it shows in the purple that over 52% of our students, over 52% of our 1,200-plus English learner students did grow one or more levels on the LPAC exam, uh, this last year, which I think is a huge accomplishment, given what they've been through the last three years. Several of our students, especially our newcomer students, had not been in school until this year full-time. A lot of our students had kindergarten and first grade, almost all virtual. So this is a huge accomplishment for our district and for our teachers. Um, as you can see in the teal and the pink, that shows, uh, no growth and negative levels growth. We did see that, but oftentimes that is because with each increasing grade span, the test gets increasingly harder. Also, if I, if you dig into the data closely, like I love to do, um, I found students in our district who grew over 100 points on the LPAC, but it still wasn't enough to broach to the next band, um, proficiency band. So it doesn't mean our kids aren't growing, it just means that we need to dig a little bit deeper to see in what ways they're growing and in what ways we need to continue to provide support. In the middle column on the top, um, this is taken straight from the dashboard, the left, it's a little bit hard to see, are our English learners. In the middle circled are our reclassified students and on the right are our English-only students. So as you can predict, out of those three groups, our English learners scored the lowest on, um, CASP test. Our reclassified students scored in the middle and then our English-only students scored higher, but our redesignated students are closer to their EO peers than their English learner peers, which means we're moving in the right direction. Our students, as they, uh, acquire proficiency in English, they are continuing to score closer and closer to their English-only peers, which is significant, not just because it means we're doing our job, but also oftentimes these students are the kids receiving the seal of biliteracy when they graduate, so they're doing it in two languages. Uh, I think that's always important to celebrate. Moving on to the far right column on the top, that's from the data dashboard as well. And as you can see, our English learner progress, uh, measured medium. Uh, so I'm okay with that. I would like to see better this year and we're doing a lot of important things to, uh, to grow in that direction, including on the bottom right, our reclassifications. So as you can see, the first year shown is 2019, 2020. Um, between that year when we went down, not only did COVID hit, but the, um, criteria for reclassifications increased. The first year of LPAC, you could get a three or a four overall and be eligible for reclassification. The state of California looked at that and they thought, you know, we want to demand more from our English learners. We want them to reach really high levels of proficiency. So in addition to giving them a highly rigorous test, we're going to up the ante and make them score even higher. Um, and COVID hit, so our, our numbers of reclassifications went down, but as you can see, they've steadily grown, uh, throughout the years. And I'm proud to say that this year, based on last year's LPAC scores, so far we've reclassified 181 students, the highest I've ever seen in my 24 years here. But I actually have five more in my email inbox, um, because our special ed department is working so well in conjunction with our EL department to really look at the needs of our dual-identified kids who have IEPs and are English learners to see if, um, they're meeting their language goals on their IEPs and they're eligible for reclassification. We don't want to hold them back because they may not score a four, but they're meeting the goals according to what their A but they're meeting the goals according to what they're capable of doing. And thanks to our amazing sped team under the direction of Carla Salvo, we're able to reclassify many, many of our sped kids. So that number is growing. In terms of our next steps, we are continuing to provide newcomer support at our newcomer center. We have two classes of 20 now and they're doing great. We also have a team of administrators here who attend ELRise sessions at Yolo County Office of Ed. A team went with me just the other day. So we're developing our principals. I have a date on the calendar next month where our little team of ELRise reps is going to go and work with the principals on how we can just create a vision for our English learners and really put them at the forefront of all we do. And then finally, just as we've alluded many times tonight to the amazing professional learning day that happened January 10th, we had several English learner sessions that were very well attended. We got great feedback. So we're just continuing to pour into our teachers with professional learning and instructional coaching. And I'm confident that our English learners are going to continue to flourish in Washington Unified.
So the next measure I want to take you through is chronic absenteeism. And this is a measure of how many students are absent, 10% or more of the days that they are enrolled in. And it's a measurement that only goes kindergarten through eight. And it's of course last year's attendance rates. And the key thing there is 10%. So in a year, a school year of 180 school days, if a student misses 18 days of school, they would be considered chronically absent because that would be 10%. So once they hit that 18, at any point of the school year, they're going to be chronically absent. This gives you the chart of what it turned out on the dashboard. As pointed out before in our attendance presentation in September, there was a huge difference in attendance for, you know, last school year, 21, 22, compared to previous school years in our district. And so chronic absenteeism, you know, skyrocketed from where it was. It is still, if you look at current, those numbers are current, basically where we are today. They, those numbers may change as we go forward because we still have quite a bit of school year left. However, that's where they are up to this point. And you can see they're still high. Although they have decreased from last year, they are still high. This is going to be a huge task for us as we look at our next steps. We have committed resources and staff to work on this. However, you know, for a long, for a period of time, we have told people that if they're not feeling good, to stay home. And it's, the culture of what we did back in 18, 19 compared to what we do in 22, 23 is very, very different. However, we are working hard. We've had some attendance campaigns to really talk about, to really make sure parents understood that this is important. But at the same time, we don't want them in school if they're not feeling well. So it's one of those things that is tough to overcome right now for our district. However, we've put a lot of resources into our social emotional learning with a screener. We've been working on professional development with our, you know, positive behaviors. Again, social emotional learning. And we have invested in personnel. We have invested in programs, including Victor Community Services, Mental Health Services. We, again, just as the previous item, our SIPSA's will be important because this will be an item that we will see as we go forward as being something that we're going to have to do different things than what we did before. Because the old accountability back in 2019, 20 is not something that can be applied to our current situation. So we're going to have to adjust. Graduation rate also, one that I'm sure everyone's very familiar with. And basically it's looking at students in 12th grade who completed high school and students who completed, got their high school diploma within five years of starting high school. Of course, that's in terms of how people are graduated. Those are locally determined graduation requirements. You just get, you do this by finding the total number of students who earned a high school diploma divided by the total number of students who could have earned a diploma. And that's how you get your percentage essentially, or graduation rate. So in our district, this was an indicator that we were rated as high. So that is good. If you look at 18, 19 compared to 21, 22, for the most part, our percentages improved. We are very concerned though that we noticed that our homeless population and our African-American students did have decisive drops. So we are evaluating that. You know, the bottom line is, I know we put percentages up here, but every one of these percentages has a, those are students. Those are our students. And those students, as part of our strategic plan, as you know, what a portrait of a graduate is, each one of those students is important to us. And so, you know, with those two particular groups, those are smaller populations of the cohort. That does give us an opportunity to dig down deeper into who those students exactly were. For example, I know with the African-American cohort, that is four students less. Basically, four more students who are African-American would have graduated. That would have put us back to the percentage that we had before. So again, really drilling down deep into what, who those students are and what caused them to not get their diploma. So those are, those are some of our next steps. Again, also ongoing and early monitoring of the student progress. Part of that might be looking at what staff is doing what in our personnel in terms of how this data is gathered. There's a long ways from, at the school level where this data is gathered, till it gets to Calpads. And so there, you know, there's many humans along the way. So we are definitely trying to analyze that better. But we also want to bring professional development opportunities to accelerate learning, including, you know, we've ruled out grading for equity. We have not done this with every grade level. We are currently at the middle grades. We think it's having an impact in terms of less Ds and Fs. However, you know, we're going to continue rolling it out to more and more staff. Again, we have a lot of strategic programs. We're looking at the different intervention tutoring and mentoring that we've done to where we can increase and improve upon it. One of the things we've done this year is we've embedded the credit recovery into the master schedule, which I think is a big step. That means kids don't have to go after school to actually get credit recovery. Counselors and the administration there at Yolo and River City are working to find ways to actually embed that within the day of their school day to make it easier for students to attend and get that credit recovery. Next one, we'll look at a suspension rate. This is the only measure on the dashboard that is actually kindergarten through 12th. And it just measures student suspensions. It's the total number of students who were suspended one or more days during a school year divided by the total number of students ever enrolled at the school year. Once a student is at your school and he's or she are suspended, they're yours. They count on your record, even if they move to another school. So if we look at this one, again, comparing the dashboard, again, 21, 22, we saw a rise compared to 18, 19. What, one thing that's promising is that if you look at the current level of suspensions, you can see that it is markedly has improved over what the dashboard looked like last year. So this is an indicator that we're already showing a lot of progress in. You know, behind that is some of the things that we talked about with chronic absenteeism. But it's also, you know, an incredible, in all these measures, there's an incredible amount of work from our staff, our principals, our teachers, our classified staff, trying to find ways to help students make good choices and be part of a positive, safe culture. And it's making a very big difference this year. We can see very big improvement so far. Thought you'd like to see some local district comparisons. So what we have here are two tables. One is the 2018, 19 dashboard. We put some local districts up. Now, these local districts are not all like districts. These districts vary in size and populations within those districts. Unlike the graph I showed you earlier, these, they're local, but they can be, many of them are very different than Washington Unified. And so this kind of gives you an idea of how students did in 2018 compared to now, or the most current dashboard. What you will notice in all school districts on this chart, and I think I got, I tried to get all the unified school districts in Sacramento and Yolo County. I may have missed somebody. I didn't get districts if they were just an elementary district or a high school district. I tried to get, stick to just unified districts like us. But what you'll find is that in all of them, they all had significant drops from 18, 19 to 21, 22. And I think that speaks to what we talked about, occurred in the last two years. What you also notice is that, you know, our staff held its own when compared to our region. And so, you know, even though we see the challenges and we see that our results were not as good as 18, 19, there's also, I just, I think I couldn't, I have to acknowledge the incredible work of our staff to keep us in the game during this time, which was a very big challenge. And there was all, you know, those, the points and these points, these percentages just don't reflect that. So just wanted to keep that up there to your knowledge. And again, there's two slides. One is 18, 19, the other one is 21, 22. I just showed you, the one I'm on now is 21, 22. The first one was 2018, 2019. Again, just kind of reiterating the next steps, you know, this, these results are part of our LCAP educational partner engagement. So as we are talking to our partners about the LCAP, these, these results are a big part of that discussion. We encourage our school leaders, our principals to present their results to their school community, to explain these results as well. You know, as well as identifying things to celebrate, we want to identify the actions and services that can be approved upon in these results. And so we will use these results in our local control and accountability plan as we develop our latest, our next version. And we, and also for our SIPSA's, our school plans for student achievement at the school level. And we're going to identify the areas where the support is needed. And we're going to do a better job of targeting that in our plans as well as monitoring the progress throughout the year. I do want to acknowledge too that our staff has been working very hard to monitor these quarterly. And I, you know, to my knowledge, we haven't done a great job of that over time, but we are working hard to do that right now. In fact, tomorrow, our principals, who are still here, will also spend some time with me tomorrow just to actually go over these results and look at their own school scorecards. And so everybody's working hard to monitor this at an ongoing level. Rather than waiting for end of the year autopsies, we're trying to, we're trying to do this as we go. Thank you. And again, I really do want to thank our staff for the hard work they put in. They, I think there was some, there was a lot of heroism from the staff last year. And that's all she wrote for that presentation.
Okay, thank you so much. I don't have any public comments. Do we have any that have come in?
No public comments received.
Okay, well then we'll go to our board comment.
I just have really one comment and it's more of a question. I mean, first of all, I think you know pretty well how much standardized tests kind of trigger me from my iReady questions in the past. The only question I really have is, so 21, 22, really horrible year to look at as a baseline. So you can't really look at that as, as kind of like we're back in the flow because we just literally came back from having this tragic event happen to all of our, right?
So does that mean 22, 23 is really going to be the baseline which we should be looking at? Don't know if you heard me there. Is this year going to be the baseline that we should really be focusing on? Or is it going to be a marriage between the two?
What you're saying is very realistic. But my understanding is it's going to be a combination of this year and next year.
Oh, and next year, okay.
Our next, or this school year, meaning two years combined. And so the colors will be back next year. What we strive for is growth. And so that's the important thing. And so right now, what we're seeing in our monitoring is we are seeing growth from the scores of that dashboard. And so that, that's, that's good. I mean, that's what we want to see is that growth and that progress. So, but my understanding is going to be measuring those two years.
Thank you for all your hard work. And I think like last year, I said, this is a year of grace, right? Because the first year, we kind of started to come back. And I think someone in the audience had said it before, it's not going to be normal, right? So great job. I mean, kind of the things that we had predicted, our students were experiencing homelessness. Like that's, that's huge for us, right? The foster youth, that's not unexpected. I think I flagged that before, you know, before COVID and the schools shut down. So it's not surprising. I just want to just acknowledge the hard work that you actually are taking the, rolling up your sleeves and looking at it and doing the quarterly. That's, and just, you know, kind of the efforts that you've made and the investments we've made. I have a bias towards English language learners, you know that. But it also shows you that we actually planned strategically over the last six years, that, I've been around six years intentionally to focus on ELA. So it is actually really heartening to say like, when we actually focus on a goal, even, you know, even in the midst of like a crisis, that we saw those gains. Like that's huge for me, right? Like investing, being strategic, being intentional about like, we can't do all things all the, all the time, but being targeted, targeted universalism, we can make change. So that is actually really heartening. But I even said, this is just, it's purple for a reason. It's purple because we all know across the state, there was, like this, this was going to happen. So, so just really, really proud of the fact that we're actually wanting to kind of look at the data, do kind of equity-based, targeted, kind of grading for equity and all of that. So, and I'm glad that we are like being honest with ourselves. And I'm glad that we're working together and, you know, professional learning is part of that journey. So I, it is what it is. And I know we will do better because as evidence, when we focus on it, ELA is that, that kind of lighthouse, if you will, of like the fact that when we pour our resources, when we're targeted, we can make a difference. Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to quickly say, and to piggyback on what Vice President Wong said, thank you because often enough, our principals don't get to hear us say this because we usually make board comments and we say thank you to our administrations much later in the agenda, like when we make our board comments. You know, thank you so much for all the hard work that you've put in, especially to our administrative teams that are in the DO that often have to stay here or sit here late and listen to our, our ramblings. I do want to say, since the principals are here, thank you very much for your hard work. You've done an exemplary job.
Make sure to tell the ones that left.
Okay, yes, Tracy Benegas.
And I'll say it in Spanish, gracias, 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 municipales. I'm big on the word team. I think it's, it gets loosely, you know, thrown around. But there's a difference between being on a, on a team and being on a winning team. The conversations are crucial, they're honest, they're transparent, and there's accountability. So thank you all for showing up, for each other and in our community. And you all look like a beautiful, winning team. So thank you, thank you for everything you do.
They don't just look, they are.
But they look the part too, is you know, you gotta.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge that as I was looking through the data, each area that I thought, I have a question on this, what's happening here? You pulled it out and you addressed it all. And I know that you're all addressing all of those pieces at your school sites and that you're looking really deeply at your kids as individuals, not just at the scores and pieces. And that's really important for us as well. And I had a parent just on the way here because this is now public and this is going out, right? And say, oh, you know, I'm concerned about some of this, as they will. You know, when they see a district here or there. And you provided so much good language here, the work that everyone's doing. And it was very easy for me to say to that parent, let's go schedule a tour and I'll take you there and we'll go together because it's a really great place and you'll love meeting this admin team. You'll love meeting the teachers there and let's go together. And so we really do have places where I'm confident and grateful for all of you. I'm also excited for, I want to acknowledge that the truancy piece is a really big issue. And yes, COVID has disrupted that as well. And we're getting coughs and colds and everything else, you know? And, and that does impact when we can be at school. But also I'm so excited for the Community Schools Grant. And thinking about how we're leveraging money, not only are we getting the state funding for the community schools and the implementation that's happening, we're getting $500,000 a year for five years that is going to help support our schools. And so I think that especially that truancy piece, that will help, I think, take. And so I think that especially that truancy piece, that will help, I think, take some of the burden off the shoulders of all that you're doing and will help in that area. And so I want to thank you for that. And also I want to say that since our admins are all here, I wanted to bring up this piece. I had talked to Dr. Hildreth and said, you know, I really love getting on the campuses and I feel like we've, this year for me is all about reconnection a little bit and getting back into some of the places that we haven't been as much. And so there will be coming out, A, signup sheet, it's optional, but to all the principals and schools, and it will go to the full board. And I, everyone here is, is working. And so please give grace that we're not all going to be able to come to the school sites. But I picked days that I could come, and then you're all invited if you can, but with the understanding that we're all busy and it's hard to do, and you can also go at other times, of course, too. But if you want to sign up for a time to highlight a program you're doing, something that's happening that you're proud of, you want to show off, I know you're all working hard, we want to come in and see that and to highlight it. So, and not just see you in a board meeting at, you know, almost nine o'clock at night. So thank you very much for that, and I really appreciate all the hard work. And it was, you're right, it was a really hard time and you all lifted up our kids. So thank you.
Yes.
I was just going to ask, is this something that, this PowerPoint going to be available or should have been available to our public prior to the meeting? Because if so, this would be something I think would help, you know?
It, it will be posted.
After the meeting?
Yeah, it will be posted. I'm not sure where it's, or is it already?
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I think a few parents had told me that, that they don't see all of the attachments or the, and so I wasn't sure if, if they all get attached or maybe one or two. I mean, if it's an oversight, no problem, you know?
This will be public though.
Okay. Because this is great for you to be out there, and I think it's, it's really important.
To have it ahead of.
Yeah, yeah, to have it ahead of time.
Okay. Um, as we get ready to move on, I do want to acknowledge right now that we're parents too. And if you see me move out, I'm very sorry, but I'm having a childcare issue and so you'll, you might see me slip out. And it's just my mom had and not having children at home by themselves late at night. So I will pass it on. Thank you. We got all moved around. Oh, because we're only on information discussion, that's where I am. Okay, so now we're on two. Washington Unified Local Control Accountability Plan Midyear Update, and that is with Stephanie Groth, the Director of Compliance and Accountability.
Yes, I'll, I'll just start us off here for a second, and we'll be joined by a few other members of our Ed Services team as well, who will join in on this presentation. So tonight's purpose, of course, is to update the Washington Unified about our local control accountability plan, our LCAP, which you heard me reference in our previous presentation, including information on the metrics, progress on actions, and also a glimpse of how we are working to align our LCAP with our strategic plan. And so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Accountability and Compliance, Stephanie Groth, who is the person who leads our LCAP process with our staff, does a great job of making sure we're accountable. And so I'm going to turn this over to her right now.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. And as was mentioned, I really get to share some of the work that all of the district does, all of the departments, every employee that puts into truly making us exceptional. So I'm thrilled to be here, and I will have some other people joining me in presenting. There we go. So as was previously mentioned, our alignment to our strategic plan, our LCAP really looks at hitting all of the goals for student success, our equity principles and our four pillars. One of the things that we've actually looked at is when we presented the strategic plan and LCAP last year and SIPSA's all in one night, and I realized that was a lot of, of papers. I think Stan mentioned it was just over a bazillion. Don't quote me on that. It was quite a bit. We really want to talk about, plan shouldn't be something that is just on, in a binder on your bookshelf. It really should align, and we can do better when we have that alignment with our plan. So as we presented those and we've talked a little bit about the SIPSA's, but I want to point out that alignment with the strategic plan, this is just one example. I have a large spreadsheet that many people have worked on with me, but really looking at this example of our college and career readiness goal in our LCAP, looking at only one of the metrics, we heard a lot about the metrics just previously, with our academic success, taking our CASP results from that, that really does align to our strategic plan with our goals for student success, which is goal four in the strategic plan, as well as our instructional effectiveness, pillar A, and of course, our equity principles, and we picked one out to really highlight that. As a reminder, the LCAP is a three-year plan, and I think that was brought up earlier, that it is a three-year plan. And it does really give us an opportunity to show our how, our what and our why of our programs. It's a chance for us to tell our story within the district. And looking at the LCAP process and timeline, this really looks at what that looks like from when we started with our three-year plan, and then where we are now with our 21, 24 LCAP, that three-year plan, there really was that alignment to the eight state criteria and the board priorities, as well as really pulling out those resources to support our English learners, foster youth, low-income students. And then, of course, we adopted our LCAP. And then as we move into our 20, 22, 23, 20, 23, 24, that's a lot of twenties, we continue that continuous cycle of identifying our needs, what are our goals, getting input from our educational partners, looking at our actions and services as well as evaluating that, and then going back, what are our needs based upon that evaluation? The majority of the presentation tonight, and this is kind of like a part two-ish of the last presentation, because many of the metrics were previously discussed, and as we look at that through our dashboard, but there are some metrics that were identified by our educational partners through that input that began back in 20, 20, 21, as we were developing the 21, 24, everybody following the numbers, LCAP. So with that, and as we just heard, with our goal one, and I did color code this, so for those who have a black and white, maybe a little bit harder, but it is color coded with our goal one being in green. These were the metrics that are on the dashboard, and we just went over those, as well as our local indicators that really tie to our goal one. As was mentioned, the box on the far right, it's not blank, it's blank because there is no data and that is not reported at this time. So we did identify some additional metrics. These, again, one of the big parts about the LCAP is that we had meetings with our associations, with our DLAC and ELAC and principals and sites to really put together that three-year plan. And some of the additional metrics included wanting to have the professional learning be part of that metric. We've had a great presentation, and then we cannot share enough what a great day that was had earlier this month. And then we have our iReady. And so I actually am going to turn it over to Director Answorth, who is going to talk about and just give you some of that information, current information on iReady. You want both of the clickers.
Thanks, Stephanie. Good evening, everyone. I'm, I'm really excited to be here to give an update on our, our mid-year diagnostic data. iReady is a diagnostic tool that we use to get data over the course of the school year. Like Stan mentioned, CASP data is great. We kind of, he joked about it being an autopsy data, because the time we get the results, patient's gone, right? And so the iReady data is live, we get it throughout the year and we're able to monitor growth. And so the, it's a little confusing to look at. So I have a sample slide, just so you can see what these graphs are going to look like. So this is just sample data. iReady gives us results in a three-tiered triangle, with the bottom being tier one, the green, that is students who are at or above grade level standard. In the middle, the yellow tier is tier two, those are students who are one grade level below standard. And the red at the top is tier three, those are students who are two or more grade levels below standard. So you can see on this, it tells you the percentage. So in this sample one, it's 30% of students at green, 53% at yellow, and 18% at red. So if you like triangles, I got some triangles for you. So this is our math results, looking at last year's 21, 22. The triangle on the right at the top is diagnostic one last year, compared to our growth in diagnostic two last year. And then at the bottom, this is this year's diagnostic one, that's what we take in August and early September, and diagnostic two, which students just took prior to winter break. And so as we're looking for growth in green, that's, growth in green is good, and we want reduction in red, and that's what we're looking for. So in last year, our students who took the diagnostic number one, the beginning of the year, they were, we had 12% of our students in the green tier at or above grade level. When they took diagnostic number two last year, we saw that number grow to 19%. I mean, you can see the other percents there. We were really excited this year that we got off to a better start. Our students this year were 13%. And you look at these numbers up here, we had almost 600 more students test this year. And so we're pulling from a, a bigger batch of students, and we saw an even bigger growth, up to 21% of our students at or above grade level in math from the diagnostic one to diagnostic two. The next slide is going to look the same, but these are our reading results. You could see our green sections are bigger, our, our language arts is higher. And so you could see again, are, we have about an 8% growth from diagnostic one to diagnostic two last year. That was consistent this year with an 8% growth from diagnostic one to diagnostic two. So we're really proud of the growth that the students are taking. This is, these are all of the students who took diagnostic one and number two from, we're really focused on third through eighth grade, but we had over, over, I think, 600 students in first and second grade also took it, as well as many of our math and language art students at the, at the high school. So we want to zoom in on the green. So this is a, a zoomed in version of just the students who are at or above grade level by, oh, sorry, at or above grade level by grade. So the column on the left is, again, these are our math results, was the 21, 22, these are percent of students in that grade level during the diagnostic number two last year, who were at or above grade level. So again, you see 15% of our third graders last year, at or above grade level this year, 17%. So the really exciting thing to do with this table, and I love to do this, is you look diagonally. We look at last year's third graders, we look at this cohort of students, and then what they did, those same group of students this year, tremendous growth. And so we're really proud of that success year after year. And then this last slide is those same results in reading. We saw, again, huge success in our middle school with our, with our language arts assessments or diagnostic. Last year's sixth graders were at 32%, we saw that go to 35% this year. And last year's seventh graders, 37, 37%, up to 37%. So again, if we, we can really zoom in and, and track these students like Assistant Superintendent Mois said, these are students, these aren't just percentages, we were able to, to click. And, and my thing that we tell administrators and teachers, a printed out iReady result is worthless, the, the, the information lives in the program. The more you click, the more you find, and you can dig in, get into our subgroup data, look at these students by name and by need. So we're really proud of the growth. And we're, we're really to have iReady, to have a tool to give us this data that students, to be able to chart students' growth over the course of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. So those are our metrics within our goal one. The next part of the presentation is we want to look at our actions that are tied to each of the goals. Actions are tied to the metrics of the goal. So really looking at, this is a graph that you've seen before and how we've monitored them. We've presented our COVID relief funds and our progress last year using this very similar table. Just wanted to say that with our completed and performing, sometimes things are completed, but they were completed for this year, but we're doing them again next year, so it's not like a check and done. So the green art could continue. So we've lumped completed and performing together. The yellow and the reddish color, implementing and developing, does not mean that those are not beneficial or that we are not continuing them, it's more of a progress monitoring. So with implementing, implementing, sorry, the activity is being carried out, but it has not yet advanced as far as we had planned, and we continue to want to look at that. Some of that just has to do with the timing of the year. You're going to see one that talks about AP tests, we haven't given them yet, so we can't make that green. So that's just an example. So yellow and the, and the reddish color do not mean it's not happening, it's just not at that stage yet. And we did actually take our actions and lump them together. So you can see, oh, look at this. This little number right here where it says 1.05, and you can see the numbers all over, they're not always in numerical number, but that actually means goal one, action five. So for those who have the full LCAP or want to go back and actually look at those goals and actions, they are tied directly to what is in the LCAP. So within this, actions of completed or performing, really looking at our staffing, that is an area that we are, we were looking, we're performing, we have our EL director, we have an EL teacher on special assignment, those directly relate to that action in supporting our EL reclassification rate. We just heard from Director Tran, what a wonderful job all of the supports are doing. We have our ITLs, our intervention specialists, we have instructional coaches, our EL program specialists as well. So those are all directly LCAP actions that are occurring. Our support for staff with our standards-aligned learning, as well as our professional development with special education. We're going to hear a little bit more about our special education support in goal four, as that was a goal that was added last year. Of course, our supports for our English learners with our newcomer center and our EL supplemental materials, those are all performing areas. Our second slide is also green, as we look at our goal one, with our curriculum and supplemental support, really looking at what are those supports that we're providing to students and monitoring those as well. Our universal academic screener, standards-aligned curriculum, looking at our pilots of our curriculum, our CTE program, our NCT partnership, as well as our CTE staffing, our VAPA, as well as our site supports for targeted students. Those are outlined in the SIPSA plans, and we've heard our SIPSA's talked about a lot lately. We've really moved and are looking at how do those SIPSA's align to what our goals are. For goal one in the implementing section, we have the professional development. We had a fabulous presentation, and I know some people may go, wait, you've been touting this, like, why is it not green? We're not here to split hairs. This was a, a collaborative process as we looked at what is performing, but how do we refine that? What other things are we looking at in supporting our staff with the professional development? Our strategic summer programs, I can tell you, we had our second collaboration meeting today, so that we will be able to bring that back, including our extended learning opportunities under the direction of Rahel Adebaki and Ryan Ferro, assistant. So we will bring that information back as well. Here tutoring. In our developing, we have our standards-based grading. This is an example of one, yes, we are moving forward, yes, we are doing the grading for equity, but we, we want it to be a little bit further, and we're continuing to work with that. In our goal two, this is our culture and climate section, and goal. Our metrics and actions, our metrics on the dashboard are really looking at that chronic absenteeism suspension rate, and then our local indicators are listed there as well. Not on the dashboard is our PBIS implementation. And that, Mari Romero and Dr. Jay Burns are assisting with that implementation, and Rosie, I'm phoning everybody out, setting. Really, I know, I feel like I should use my laser. But the PBIS, and, and as we continue to monitor that tied in with that SEL, and we'll bring back more information, we've heard about our suspension rates and looking at like our, our different data with Healthy Kids Survey as well. Again, specific to our progress on actions for goal two, we do have our swipe part, the support for all students to attend in sixth grade, our staffing and support through enrichment, our recruit and retain highly qualified staff, that ties directly to that support for our classified staff and for our admin for that professional development. Again, I get, I get to, I get to sing the praises of all the staff in this presentation, because that does go to everyone being able to support. because that does go to everyone being able to support. Looking at our equity training, our homeschool transportation and playworks. Our implementing, we are continuing with the professional development with our restorative practices and PBIS. Our wellness centers, we are moving forward with that. Thank you to the board for all of your, your work with that, as well as our diversity recruitment that our HR department has presented and is moving forward. And then our developing, we are continuing to investigate that Saturday restorative practices part. Goal three is really looking at parent and community engagement. And we put this up there and we talked about, oh my gosh, like it looks like a blank slide. But with that being said, wait till you hear about the action. So this is something that we recognize is so important through our parent and community engagement. The dashboard metric really is a local indicator when we look at this, but we have so much more that goes into that and so much more into the metrics with our parent participation, our Healthy Kids Survey, looking at our DLEC participation. With our progress on actions, our staffing. We've talked about the staff that we have that support our parents from our site administrators, our counselors, our social workers, our outreach specialists, one that is specifically dedicated to help our fit families, which is families in transition. And then our homeschool liaisons, liaisons. We have so much to support. And this is where, although that metric only had the one metric on the dashboard, we're doing a lot here. Our parent and community support, we have, have completed a parent team of positive discipline. That is a district level supported program. We did one in Spanish, one in English, and we'll do that again with our next series. So one day is in Spanish, and then one is in English. As well as, this is really where our sites, and I'm sorry that some of the principals had to leave, but they're doing a lot from parent engagement nights, topics such as suicide prevention, social media, really talking to their parents in regard to what information do you want to know? Coffee with the principal, all of those are going on in this section. We do also have our supports through attending the KABE conference. We are continuing to monitor things like our Sammy circuits and then our fingerprinting. So if you want to be fingerprinted and volunteer, that is at no cost. And then of course, our implementing is our stipends for our staff to, who support translation. That was a lot. As I transition into goal four, goal four was actually not a goal that was on our 21, 202124 LCAP. It was actually identified after, due to the fact of some of our dashboard data from the 201819 school year. And so like many districts, many LEAs, we actually had an identified group where we added a additional goal. This is not the only spot where you will see support for our students with disabilities. It is throughout in our actions. So if you remember, and I talked about that cycle during that three-year LCAP when we developed, there are many items in there that are also addressing these students and families and support for everyone, but we now have a special goal. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Director Salva, who's going to talk about that. Ta-da. This one advanced.
So here is the metric that you would see on the dashboard that we've already reviewed and seen. And we have this goal because our students with disabilities, low situation rate. I need to speak up more. But although we have, you know, the dashboard that's sharing that, there are a lot of just highlights and good things going on in our district across all of our schools. And these are just a few things that I wanted to highlight, and it's not by any means the only things that are occurring. But something that has come to light at our high schools is including avid strategies into our academic success classes. Mainstreaming opportunities continue to flourish throughout the district at different levels with different students. And so of course, when we increase our mainstreaming opportunities, we're allowing our students to be part of the academic language and of course, socializing with their peers. So two of our school sites continue with the co-teach program at K3 for Westfield and 68 for Stonegate. And we're continue to see positive outcomes from having that opportunity there. This year, we had a little bit of a hiccup with our workability just because of new regulations, but with the support of our workability coach and of course, our site leaders, we've been able to still find some opportunities to place our students within our district, which is also a great opportunity for them because some of our students who participated in workability actually come on as employees in our district, so that's always amazing. And then one of our major goals is been providing ongoing training and having our para educators be part of our collaboration with their teachers because they are providing that instruction to our students. So we've been able to have them participate in some of the, the curriculum training alongside their teachers. So they're all working and collaborating together. And then because of all the reasons we've talked about since 201819, we have not had a full, so part of our community advisory committee through our YOLO FELPA, we have four seats on that committee, and we haven't had that filled in the last three or so years just because of COVID and all the things. But I'm super excited to say that we now have all four. We have a student, we have two parents and a staff member. And it's nice because it's the gamut of, of kind of our community. So I'm excited to see that happening. And then part of the actions that are tied to our LCAP is our curriculum for special education. And thank you to the board and the commitment to our programs. We've been able to provide our teachers with access to specialized evidence-based, this is a long, so I have to read this, multi-sensory curriculum to provide intervention for students with dyslexia, dyscalculia, processing and attention. And so we're able to meet the needs of all of our students in all of our programs.
We have this slide in yet again. I know we're going to talk about the progress on the strategic plan. I think that's later in the agenda for our future board meeting. But just really reiterating that all of our plans do align to each other, and we continue to work to make sure there's that alignment. So our next steps, if you go think back to that cycle, here's another cycle of what we do when we adapt, we adapt, we grow, and then we reflect. Really looking at continuing to collaborate with our educational partners from all of you, from the input that our staff gives us through our parent engagement meetings, as well as continue to gather data to monitor the actions. And we want to make sure that what we're doing is meeting our needs. And then of course, refine and revise our actions. And then the last one is just a reminder that our LCAP public hearing is in June of 2023, aligned with the budget, public hearing.
Before we turn it over to the board, do we have any public comments on this item? Seeing that there are none, I'll turn it over to the board. I'm looking at Clerk Coffee and then Trustee Pizzotti and then Trustee Vanega. Go ahead.
I didn't think so. I was like, is it on, is it not? Okay, my bad, I'm sorry. So first off, let me repeat myself. I love seeing this. I like seeing the green, I like seeing the progress, I like seeing that we're working towards, you know, having everything being done for our kids. I do have some questions with that. Going through the culture and climate part of the presentation, there were some actions that you had here. First off, my question, one of my questions, which schools is this all for? Is it all of our schools within our school district?
Yes, so the LCAP encompasses all the schools, the district actions. And some are specific to certain sites, but the LCAP is a district level.
Okay, great, I love to hear that. Home to school transportation. I see that's here, it's in green, it's completed, it's being performed. I'm curious to know, how does that work for our YOLO students who have no transportation to school? And they are using via or Uber to get to school? And they are paying for that themselves? I'm not sure if you were aware.
So, I can actually, let me talk about the actions so that, sorry, Stan. And part of it, really, I want to go back to when we looked at the actions, we had to determine where they were. So it is a kind of an overall, like where they are. Specific to that action within the LCAP, it really is looking at providing that transportation, where it originated was from the transportation to the comprehensive high school. I do hear your concern and can definitely look into that and go back and get that.
Because I think that might also be part of the reason why we have absentees increase in that. Can also be the reason why we have other areas that are not being meet, being met. So I mean, I see it here, and I love that there is, you guys have the drive to want to be there. But if you talk to your students and find out, like, it is a concern for them. It is something that is hard for them.
Thank you, it does give us something to go back and have those further conversations.
Okay, and that is all that I have.
Yeah. So again, like I said, I'm trying not to get triggered by iReady. But I'm gonna say, go to the iReady slide, I think it's number, it's 12 out of 35. So it's 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 look great. It's 3, 4, 5, and if you do the diagonal, you notice that, you know, this year's class of third graders, you know, is, is, you know, about the same, right? Like as, as what we'd expect. But there's a small decline in everyone. Is there, is there a particular reason why the elementary grades didn't do as well as, as the middle school grades?
It's a great question, you're looking at the reading, it's the reading.
Yeah, yeah, just the reading.
So, one more ahead of that, thank you. Yeah, so there's, there's a lot of components to this. The, the reading diagnostic is the one that doesn't translate the best to CAS readiness. In CAS, we say you could write your way to an answer. In iReady, it's multiple choice, there is no narrative input. And so there, it is more of a challenge, it is, it's, it's a grind. That, that is the test that, that students, I would just be honest, probably check out of a little quicker just because, and really, the more you get right, the harder your next passage is. And so there, there are a variety of reasons why we, we didn't see the growth in, in the younger grades that we saw in middle school.
So, and I'm just gonna say, like, I appreciate that, I appreciate iReady for what it is, but I always take the diagnostics we take from it with a grain of salt because, and it's, my daughter is a perfect example, she has ADHD. And she went up 68 points from, in math, from, you know, the beginning part of this year when she first took it. I don't know that she was 68 points different in what she actually knew. I just think she was looking at squirrels, you know, because that's what she does when she's not interested in something. And an iReady test is she will daydream and look off into space, and that'll show that she's three grade levels below what she ought to be. That's what I'm saying about the snapshot in time, which iReady can be. So I do, you know, I'm not going to get all worked up about this, but I was just wondering, is there something that we can correlate? Or a reason why the elementaries weren't, weren't keeping pace with what we saw in, in the, in the middle?
And it's a great point, and we say that it's a measure, not, not the measure. And so this is really fresh data, and so our PLCs are just now diving into it. Our third, fourth, and fifth grade all had an iReady training yesterday during their, or yeah, yesterday during their district PLT, where they're now diving in and to identify that exact need. Normally, we're looking at math, normally looking at the struggles in math. And so it is, it's, it's new data that we're really excited for them to dive in and, and use and be able to identify where their students are struggling.
All right, yeah, thank you for all this. I appreciate the way you guys are breaking up the, the red, the, 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 the yellow and the green. As far as, it seems like you guys are looking to have systems in place to achieve any goal. And it's kind of like a nice framework. In the areas of the red, can we pull up one of the slides, like just any example of, like the implementing? Just any, any, any of the, the progress, yes. Something that I'd like to, yeah, so developing, something that I'd like to see would be just those dates. Like, are we looking to, are we looking to move it into the, yeah, we're looking to move it into the yellow by, you know, just to not just have it lingering there, like this is what we're not, you know, we're not doing yet. But we are planning on having it, that way it just adds a little bit of that accountability piece to, it's coming and it's moving into the yellow. I'm sure you have that in your notes and your calendar for presentation.
Thank you, that, that is great. And we do have that information in a very large spreadsheet, so.
I bet, yeah. No, I know the way those were.
That does bring up a good point because some of them, as I, as I started with, we're just not there. We haven't given our AP exams yet, so.
Right, right, okay, perfect. Yeah, that would be my only suggestion, just having dates as specific as a month or so, just to, to know that, you know, by, by March, we'll be getting to this piece, just for the developing piece.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work on, on this. And I know it's going to feed into the new LCAP that we have to develop in, for the next three years. So just acknowledge that it's a tool, it's not the end goal. So, you know, kind of the social emotional is the balance. I don't, you know, again, like the last time, these are just test scores, and it's not the end all be all, but it shows us, what I'm interested in is disparities, right? How do I, how do we identify, how are we using it in the moment to target services? Right, so, and we're doing it four times a year, right? So it's just, this is just snapshot, and I appreciate the clarification that is just, it's progress made. I mean, you don't have to do it today, and I don't know, are you, are you requesting that it come back with some due dates? Or at least send the chart, the big chart to us, is that?
No, not necessarily, no.
Okay, so then you just wanted confirmation that was time bound, okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, you wanted just confirmation that it was time bound.
And anytime, I'm happy to answer any LCAP questions from the board, from cabinet, the community at any time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is item, we are done with information items. And then we're going to move on to the consent agenda item, removing action, into action item 3C and D. Any other amendments to consent before we vote on consent? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to move consent with the removal of 3C and 3D.
I will make motion to approve consent with those two items moved to action.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you have your consent. We will move on to now action item P1, approval of the 2022 SARC for all school sites in WSD. So Assistant Superintendent Stan Moisey, you are backed up. No? Oh, I forgot to mention, and item eight was removed, but we had voted that.
So our SARC, SARC's are a process that we go through every year. And again, this is something our principals work on with Stephanie, and, and we get other district partners to also share in this experience. Stephanie leads this process, so she's going to go over the rationale of this item, and hopefully we can approve it tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. I am here this evening to discuss the SARC, which are the school accountability report cards. As we live in education. As we live in education, we have many acronyms. So, SARCs are required for schools receiving state funding, as well as they are part requirements for us to receive federal funding as well, through our Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which we call NSA. The SARCs presented this evening contain all the required reported areas. They were completed with data from CalPads, from Data Quest, from our facilities inspection tool, fiscal, educational services data, and input from our site administrators. The SARCs are completed annually. There are a few changes this year that I wanted to note with our SARC. As you may remember from last year, the teacher data tables were empty, because CDE had not released the data at that time. They did release the data for the 2021 teacher data, but the 20, the 21, 22 teacher data had not been released at the time. It still has not been released, and the expected release will be after the February 1st date in which we have to post these. So they are recommending that they be approved without that data. And then, once that data is available, we will put them in there, and we will re-upload those with those, that data. So you will see an empty data table. I'm gonna say data probably about 10 more times in the, in each of the SARC. One of the other changes was our physical fitness test. Participation rate is now reported as a participation rate, and those tables have been populated in all of the SARC. Previously, the SARC contained local data. For us, that was our iReady data, and that was only for the 2021 school year. Now we have our past data in there, and that has been populated. Just a reminder, that ED Code Section 35256 requires that a governing board to approve the SARC prior to the publication date of February 1st. And then upon the approval of the board, the attached SARC are then submitted to CDE, California Department of Education. They are posted on our website in both English and Spanish, and then hard copies are available at the schools. So this evening, we are requesting the approval of the 2021, 22 SARC for all of our schools.
Okay. Any public comment?
No public.
Seeing there are none. Any board comments, questions, concerns? I'll entertain a motion to adopt all SARC.
I'll second that.
I'll entertain.
Oh, wow.
Make the motion.
Make the motion.
Okay. So Clerk Coffee makes a motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Trustee Pizzotti seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you have your SARC.
Thank you.
I'll get this down.
All right. Moving on to consent item that was polled, 3C. And that is approval of amendment number two for Studebaker Brown Electric Incorporated for the bus charging station project.
Good evening. We are requesting approval of an amendment to the Studebaker Brown Electric contract for the bus charging station. The request for the amendment is due to the project delay, as was mentioned in the board item. I'd like to be able to provide you more information about the reason for the delay. If necessary, our Director of Facilities will help me with the explanation, but in general, the project was delayed due to issues with the equipment compatibility with our buses, and then also some manufacturer issues with the equipment. Those have been resolved. The prod, the work is all done, and we're in the closeout stage now of the project, which means that we're doing the final paperwork, we're doing the final, you know, all the, the assessments that we need to do, and we anticipate that it will be closed out by April 30th.
So, before, are there any public comments on this item?
No public.
Okay. Go ahead. Clerk Coffee?
The reason I pulled this was, as I was, I spoke with Dr. Hildreth earlier, I wanted to know what was the reason behind extending a contract like this? Where was the error? How can we, in future, when we have items that are like this, how can we prevent that? From my understanding, there was discussion prior that the items that were being, that were going to be purchased were not compatible in the beginning? And that was brought up, but nobody was listening. So, my reason for bringing this up is, I really do believe that our staff are very knowledgeable in what they do. You guys walk, talk with them, that it's important that we listen and understand where they're coming from, so we're not having to have delays, and we do not have to come and have an extended contract, and then the next one, having to make, put more money into something that's not necessary. I know it's not necessary for this one, but the other one there is too. That's my, I just wanted to understand why there was that delay, and how is it that we can try and prevent that for, in the future?
And the delay for this particular project was not due to, necessarily to our compatibility. It was a manufacturer issue. This project has gone on much longer than any of us wanted, and there's lots of lessons learned in this. And, you know, when we're finished with a project like this, it's important for us to go back and do a debrief, to say what worked, what didn't work, and then what edit, or what changes do we want to do in the future. So, thank you for your comment.
That was it. Any other comments on this item?
Just a quick question. So, our buses are through Lion, right? Lion Electric?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so, they don't sell compat, I mean, I was wondering if they sell the charging station as well?
Can't answer that question, but I can get back to you on that.
I was just, it would have stood to reason that if you're gonna buy the bus from Lion, that they would also sell the charging station, so they wouldn't have a compatibility issue, like, trying to charge a Tesla with a Chevy Bolt charger or something like that. So, right. Okay. I'm good.
You have no questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll, I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
You have your amendment.
Thank you.
So we also removed 3D, approval of AC Martin Amendment Number Two.
Absolutely. So this amendment is in direct correlation with the previous item. The previous item was extended, and that is the vendor doing the work. We also had an architect on the project who is responsible for doing the paperwork and finalizing the closeout phase, so therefore, we needed to extend that contract. The value of that is estimated at $3,600.
Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Clerk Coffee, since you pulled it?
Yeah, so, the same thing. When there is a, an issue or unexpected occurrence, I mean, I get it, when there's weather and things like that, we, there's delays, but in this case, manufacturer didn't have the part, now we have to delay it. What are, what are, are there any consequences when contractors don't meet deadlines? Or is there, because usually, if something happens, you have a timeframe, and that's your, that's what you, that's what you pay. I'm just curious to know, how does, because I'm new, help me understand, what does the school district do in incidences like that, when contractors don't do what they say they can do in the timeframe that they said they can do it?
Great question. With construction projects, as many of us know, and whether it's at our home, or we see it occurring in the community, we have a projected timeline. We'd love for them to meet those timelines, but like you mentioned, weather may happen, there's, there's the unexpected things that may occur. As I shared in our last item, on this particular project, it went a lot longer than we, we wanted to and we anticipated. We share, I would say, your frustration and the frustration of our team, that this project went on for so long. However, we had constant conversations and communications with the Studebaker, with the company, to identify what's the delay. I think part of the delay, which I think is good, is we insisted that the work was done properly before we would sign out, off, which is the right thing to do. We insisted on having those extra tests, so that we could make sure that when we sign off on this, that we are using the district and ultimately the taxpayers' money appropriately. So, you know, our, our, I don't want to say postmortem, but that's what I call it. So in the end, you know, it's circling back to say, okay, what may have been amiss on our part? What might we include in future conversations and evaluations for a future project, so that we can prevent these types of situations? We want to be able to begin a project, and a project, on time and on budget. So those are some parameters that we want to put in play.
That was really all, thank you for, for entertaining me, in that sense.
But we're here.
That's what we're here for. Any other questions or clarifications? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
I will, I will, wait, what does it go? I will approve, I move to approve.
Okay, Clerk Coffee moves.
Second.
Trustee Venegas seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
You have your amendment.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Board Governance, update revision of administrative regulations, non-discrimination harassment, AR 5145.3. Dr. Jay Burns, Director of Special Programs and Student Services. Where'd he go?
I don't know where he went.
You don't look like him, but I know that we talked about this in policy.
No, I don't know what happened. So, yes, this, this is one where we had to switch the name of, of the person who is responsible in the document. So the document is the same as what was updated previously last year, but at that time, the Director of Student Services was Dr. Andre Phillips. And, and the way it works with compliance, we are, our understanding is that when, when that name changes, we are supposed to come to the board and do that over again. So, the only change there is that we now are putting Dr. Jay Burns in that space, because he is our Director of Student Services. So we ask you to just approve that for us, and thank you very much.
Any public comment on the change that we're legally bound to do? Okay. I, board discussion? Do we want to name somebody else?
I nominate you.
Yeah, you can. All right. I move to approve this.
Second.
Okay. I move. Trustee Venegas seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
You guys just want to hear my raspy voice.
Thank you.
I was about to say, like, sing a song.
All right.
Board Governance, Effective Board Study Sessions, February and March 2023 dates. Dr. Hildreth, do you want to talk?
Is she there?
She is.
She's on mute.
She's on, well, she's on mute on her other end, so, is there somebody else in Dr. Hildreth's place to talk to us about those dates? Are we just supposed to look at dates? I'm talking to an empty dais.
Or, you want to?
Dr. Hildreth?
Do you want to move, move down one and then come back to that? Oh, there, I hear her.
Okay.
So, no, there's more. Well, I, I think, we don't hear the noise in the background. The question is, your, the, the presentation on Board Study Sessions, on March and February, are we just to confirm the dates that were available?
Yes, that's just, good evening, everyone. Sorry, I'm not there. But, yes, I just wanted to make sure that we have awareness, that we're continuing with our governance work. And so we do have our next study session on governance has been confirmed for Friday, February 3rd, from 4 to 9. And then, we have a sensitive date towards the end of March, but we will confirm that, but we just want to put it on public view, that that is the work that the board continues to engage in.
Okay. So next Friday, we are going to have a Board Study Session that we've all confirmed that we'll be at in the evening from 4 to 7, and then on March Day TBD.
It's 4 to 9, I'm sorry.
Oh, 4 to 9?
Yes.
4 to 9?
Five hours. Yes, 4 to 9.
On Friday? On our going out night?
Mario said it, I have the confirmation receipts. No, I'm just kidding.
You do have the receipts. I did say yes. Thank you, Dr. Hildreth, for coming off, off mute. So, that is just, I don't think we need to vote on this, it's just an update.
No, just, March is TBD, is that what you're saying?
So, March is TBD. I believe Marvel, Marvel, Mario has to survey us. I'm trying to get us out of here before 10. All right. And then, moving on to Board Governance, Item 3, Electric, Electronic Public Comments Discussion. This was actually a request by President Hery Gonzalez, but I feel like we should move it until she's here, so we can talk, since it's a request that she put on. Is that okay with the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Till next board meeting?
Till next board. So we'll table it till next board meeting. And we are moving on to Board and Superintendent Comments. As you can see, we had some technical difficulties on the superintendent side, so Dr. Hildreth says she will forego her superintendent comments unless she texts me. Going once, going twice. All right. We will start with Trustee Venegas.
Just, again, one more time, gracias, thank you all for, for all you do, and, like Vice President Wong said, we want to get out of here before 10, so I'll keep it short. Gracias.
Thank you. All right. Trustee Kobe Pizzotti.
So I'm gonna go in the same vein as, as Trustee Venegas, and say thank you to staff, our CSCA and our WSDA staff for all the hard work they've done, and our administrative staff for all the hard work you guys do. It appears to me sometimes that I don't think about it, but at our site levels, it was nice to see our, because that didn't, it didn't register to me, like, I hear from President Nep, and I hear from President Gendara, and I see you guys at every single, you know, board meeting until 10 o'clock at night.
And we like to see you.
And we love it, and I, no, we absolutely love it. But it, the one thing we don't often get to say is, thank you to our site administrators who do the day in and day out hard work. And so I, I did, I, I think it was great that we were able to say, you know, at least thank you in the moment, because, you know, they're not gonna stick around till 10 o'clock at night just to hear us say thank you, you know, to them. But I want them to be able to be heard, and I, and I hope that they feel like, at some point, you know, maybe they'll have an opportunity to say something, you know, about some of the concerns that they see. You know, I know that, maybe this is a crazy idea, but I know that teachers have their unions, and, you know, CSCA classified have their unions, and in some districts, admin have their union. So, if we're gonna allow for, that's right, see? If we're gonna allow for, you know, for our unions to give reports, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt my feelings at all to hear reports from our administrators as well, in terms of what they see on a day in and day out basis, because I can't be on your campus all the time. I can be on the campus on which my daughter goes to school at a lot, and hear some things from time to time, but I can't, I can't go to, you know, every single campus and make it as often as I'd like. So, I just want to say that.
Clerk Coffee, are you on?
I wanted to make sure I was before I, hey, hey. All right, I will try to make this really quick. It is great to see you guys here. It's great to see the community come in, it's great to see everybody voice their opinions through everything. I definitely want to say it was also great to see community come to events such as the Community School that they're trying to start over at Riverbank, as well as River City. It's important that they come out and give their input, and seeing those that were there say what they wanted to see at that school site was great. Having translators there as well, also great. So that way, information goes through. It's really important that we're transparent on all possible levels, and so to have them all there, perfect. Great, loved it. Back to school night. We didn't really get to see any, but anybody, you know, students come in, but we had back to school night for spring over there at River City and, and at Yolo. So, it was amazing to see all of the kids. Was a lot less kids on campus, which was nice, versus, you know, spring versus fall, but in it all, getting to see the culinary classroom also. I wasn't over there to go and drop off 50 pounds of onions the other day, just because they're learning, you know, cutting skills, why not burn their eyes while they're doing it? Just kidding. But lots of fun. And so, yeah, that's all I got. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you again to staff for the wonderful presentation. I will make it quick. Really excited about the community school. Really excited about the community schools projects, but I also want to acknowledge that that was a conversation that I had with one of our city council members, Dante Early West, who her day job is at United Way. And she brought that to me, and we brought that to Dr. Hildreth. And thank to staff who turned that around really, really quickly in support. So we can't do this without our partners, to be really, to be really, really clear. Because staff, as you can see, are working all day long. And so it's really great to have strong partners who are able to kind of write grants and support us in that effort. On that, in, in that vein, I was able to actually go to BOMA and really excited about the fact that, I didn't know this, but Yolo is the highest rate of food insecurity in the state. We were 50 out of 58. And so BOMA, in addition to, in partnership with the Yolo Food Bank, is going to actually do a, a special farmer's market at River City High School to actually address the stigma, because, because again, there's a stigma about food security, poverty, all of that. So in addition to actually bringing food, they're going to partner with culinary to actually teach kids how to cook healthy food, so it's like actually engaged. So super, super happy that we have such fabulous partners in this community who love our community. And so I was really a little bit floored when I heard that we were 58 out of 58 in terms of food insecurity. So excited about that. And with that said, we, I will end my comments, and then we'll move on to future board agenda items. We have the Strategic Plan Midyear Progress Update, February 2023. Adoption of an official WSD land acknowledgement, February 2023. Measure Z update, February 2023. And then Universal TK update in March of 2023. And we've moved the Electronic Public Comments Discussion to a future board agenda item. Anything else that we have missed? Seeing that there are none, we, we can adjourn.